Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 14th Personnel Committee meeting. I'm Christine Batiski, the Chair of the Personnel Committee. And our Cabinet Liaison is Mrs. Tara Mossman. We're going to start tonight by checking if you have any public comment. Okay, there's no public comment, so thank you. We will jump right into our first agenda item, which is the ESS Substitute Service. Tara?
So we have two representatives here tonight from ESS that will be presenting a 24-25 review of the school year for us.
Hello, everyone. My name is Samantha Hummer, Vice President of Operations for Eastern Pennsylvania. This is Christine Roman, she is the Regional Manager of our Bucks County Partnerships. We're just going to go through some high-level data. I'm happy to provide anything additional. If you have additional questions, please leave them follow-up. I do talk kind of fast, so if you need to slow down, I'm happy to do so, but I will try to cover a little bit. Just as a snapshot overall, total requested assignments so far have been 8,551. Of that, staff absences have accounted for over 5,000 of them, with supplemental requests being 3,439. A staff absence is something tied specifically to an employee, and a supplemental request is something that's going to be additional coverage, IEP meeting coverage, field trip attendance, things like that, where it's not a specific person, but there still needs to be a body in the building. Of those assignments, we've filled 7,410 for a net fill rate of 87 percent. Our teacher fill rate is higher, at a 95 percent, and we have a support fill rate standing at 64 percent. That is something we are always actively working on. We work very closely with Tara to get to different events and make more of our teams improve. You will see this as an overall increase of about 7 percent from the year prior, when we were at an 80 percent fill rate. We have a very lovely sub pool here in Pen Ridge with 197 subs. And what's most important to know, I think, is that people don't leave when they come here, working 38 average assignments. So they like it here, they stay here when they come in, they don't generally leave unless they get hired directly. We have added 82 subs to the school so far this year. EP is an emergency permitted person. That's someone with a bachelor's degree who goes through the Guest Teacher credentialing to become an emergency certified substitute teacher in Pennsylvania. We have 14 certified folks. Three people have been specifically added to the Building-Based Substitute program, and then 37 IAs. And we're also using Act 91, which is where a teacher or a college student involved in an education program, working on their degree, is able to step in as a teacher of record, pending some specific qualifications and partnership with our college/university and on the district. Here, we broke it down with key measures. This is teacher information only, and it does specifically outline the number of requests, the number of fills, the number of unfilled, and the fill rate per building. So you can kind of see the numbers, how we got to in the first slide where everything is. The teacher fill rate did increase 6 percent year-over-year from the last school year. There were a couple of things that I wanted to point out. There were 1,100 fewer assignments this year. Some of that is going to go to fewer long-term requests coming in, about 600 fewer long-term daily assignments needed in the system, and about 250 fewer IST positions. ISTs are your floating building substitutes who cover the different elementary buildings on a rotating basis, and they are needed for meetings and things like that, so the teachers can step out and they have a rotating schedule. For a point of comparison, I wanted to run the same data from the year prior with the same timeframe, so you can see. Again, we did a pretty nice job with an 89 percent fill rate for teachers overall, but this is going to show in your snapshot. We are, there are less, there are fewer unfilled assignments, so that's always great to see, but again, there have been less requests in the system. I think that's working cooperatively with a few different metrics. Also, just ran a quick data pull on total absences by all positions, so you can see the things where we're at. There are positions that we do need, some additional, you know, we're working on, paraprofessionals, long-termers, playground aides, the non-certified roles are a little hard to fill, but we are working on that. And then you can see the comparisons below the same metric year-over-year on where we're at. The Building-Based Substitute review is something we like to share, so you can understand the program. A building-based substitute is someone who dedicates themselves to Pen Ridge and to a specific building. So for example, we have two in most of the elementary locations, we have two or three in the high, in the middle schools, and then seven at the high school. We are working with Tara and the HR team to make sure we're using the best version of the Building-Based Substitute program. In years past, we've always had a very standard requested amount, that's the number we placed, they stayed in their buildings, they loved their buildings, their buildings loved them, and they didn't leave. But we're looking at some maybe revamps for the next school year to make sure we are serving the students as best we can, but also making sure we're being as financially responsible for the district as possible. This is just high-level recruitment strategies. We try to do a little bit of everything everywhere in terms of digital postings, we're on the big job boards, we come to a lot of fall events, we, Pen Ridge is really lucky, we have a lot of really great things that we've gotten to come to from the fall festivals and some different spring events. We do all sorts of unique things, including some of the job fairs that the district hosts and allows us to come to. We do information sessions for all of our folks coming in, we do them three to four times weekly with them being both in the district, so we can bring people in, give them a chance to experience Pen Ridge. We also do them virtually, because sometimes people can't always get away for an hour or two to meet with us until they've been, gotten that commitment for the job. We also do specific Act 86/91, that's the pre-service teacher thing, because their credentialing is a pinch different than our regular substitute, so we make sure that we can talk to the college kiddos, explain to them the benefits of getting into a district, working with the district before they graduate. We also do our Guest Teacher Training Program. That's how folks get the emergency permit, two to three times a month. We do run it, the state of Pennsylvania as a whole runs it two to three times a week. Bucks County specifically does it two to three times a month. But we can always get someone in generally pretty quickly, and we're seeing between 10 and 20 attendees to those events. We partner with colleges, like we've gone on for a very long time about the corporate partnerships that Christine's bringing, some leverages with Holy Family and Del Baal, but I don't think that's the moment for that. And then career fairs, we try to be everywhere, and if we are not there, we have teams of ESS folks all over the state of Pennsylvania and New Jersey and whatnot, so we can get somebody in there face time. And then yard signs, I saw the one right up here, Zypoll Evans, very happy to see that. We try to do grassroots things, banner sliders in communities, and leveraging our referral Just a quick overview, in case some folks might not be aware, we do have a lot of different staff resources available, including our Kickstart program, where we'll reimburse employees for $125 of their credentialing expenses. We have a referral program for anybody, that includes your PTO, PTA members, your district employees, and ESS substitutes, even college kiddos, they love this because they can get some extra cash. But if they send a successful referral to us through the referral portal and they start working, we, they get $100 bucks. So trying to leverage that word of mouth. We also do an Impact Award annually, where we pick a sub who has been nominated, Extra Pay Fridays, I mean, I can freeze all of this. But we do a lot of things to try and keep the subs engaged during this school year and then over the summer as well, to make sure that they're still staying involved as we move through the months of leaving at work. And then this is our contact information, and like I said, I'm Samantha Hummer, this is Christine Roman, we're kind of your faces you'll see most often, in addition to Ada Ronfo, who is our recruiter and hosts the information sessions here. That's a small snapshot of the four of us, but we have a very large team behind us to support with whatever else we need.
How many years have you been with the district?
Ooh, over 10.
And can you give us data of your fill rate and things like that for a longer period of time, just to see how you guys, a year doesn't tell us too much, but...
I can. Some of it will involve a little bit of backtracking with frontline, because they archive the data generally after four or five years.
Four years would be good.
Okay.
Just to see what's, how you're doing over time. What's our total spend?
Total spend, well, for all substitutes, it's over $2 million. That's all substitutes, above and beyond ESS.
Above.
Above and beyond ESS.
And where do they come from?
So you have substitute nurses and substitute other companies like the Judge Group.
PTS.
PTS, yeah, yeah. There's some specialized.
Okay.
Specialized, I see.
Specialized, yeah.
Did we, did you have some that overlooked, too? Or were there, so they had all the building teachers and...
Do you guys do nursing, nurses?
We can do nurses. But they do, we do go through ESS for our TA substitutes, where the Judge Group is an organization that we work with as well, that provides us TAs or PCA's on a daily basis, where these individuals would just be, if there's an absence, they would fill in through ESS.
But they also, you do long-term substitutes?
We do a portion of the long-term substitutes. There is a cutoff point where they can no longer be our employee, they would transition to district employment.
So for the unfilled, if there's, example, you're 310, where do we get those?
Some of those positions remain unfilled, and the buildings would then determine how they would fill those positions within each building, if there's positions that are unfilled for that day.
So we don't work with another agency to get this, it's just them?
It's just ESS. And our recommendation from the district is that we renew the ESS contracts for one year, and that will be presented during the Finance Committee when they discuss contracts, and then moved forward to our April Board meeting.
How's your pricing?
Our pricing is competitive.
Is it competitive? Have you checked them out?
Yes, and, and the rates will not be changing next year. Our fill rate is 95 percent for teachers, so our rates will be staying the same.
Could you expand on some of the other positions, why those might be difficult to fill, like the paraprofessional and playground aides and long-term monitors?
So there's usually two reasons why one of those are unfilled, I mean, there's a bunch of reasons, but the general two reasons with the non-certified positions, absence notification usually comes in with a lot shorter of a fill time. So it'll come in the morning of at 6:00 or 8:00 o'clock, and the absence would start at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock. So there's not a whole lot of need time there. The other point is, I think the rate is very competitive, it's much so in line with the rest of the districts, but it's still, I mean, people are going to go to maybe like a Walmart or another local, like a Wawa, and sometimes they're making $17, $18 an hour as opposed to the $16 an hour here. Which again, it's very in line with the substitute rates in the area, I wouldn't recommend a change for it. And that one is, we are continuing to improve that fill rate as well.
Okay.
I mean, looking at this from the other direction, too, because I can see that the number of requests have gone down since last year, so I think that's good news. What is, I just did some very simple math on it, it's about like 44 absent people a day across the board. Is that normal, like, is that within the range that we would expect? Okay. And then the building substitutes, I really, I know that this works really well, so I'm really happy about. Are they part of the numbers up top, or are they counted when they're filling in here? I'm sorry, you can't see what I'm pointing at. When you did, when you did all the total absences, and then the slide after it was building substitutes, when they would fill in for a day, are those counted up in the total, too, or are they something separate?
Yes, so the building-based substitute fills are counted, and I can break out the data, so you can see what's filled by a certified teacher, what's filled by an emergency permitted teacher, and what's filled by a building-based substitute in the ESS.
And then if there isn't a need in that building, does the substitute just not come in that day, or does that really happen?
So there's typically a need in some area within that building each day. If there is not a need in that building, principals will generally reach out to another building that might have a lot of absences for the day, and then that building, the sub could go to another building in the district to provide support. So that they're still reporting to work every day, it just might not be in that same building.
Okay. Would getting more of them help us? I mean, it seems like there's spots to fill.
I don't think adding additional building subs would be super helpful or impactful for the fill rate, if they're working with Tara on some of the other processes, making sure building subs are being split with new locations as they're needed, making sure that the system is accurately updating, because if Sam Hummer doesn't have a teacher spot to fill in, she could fill in that par position. We're going to have to make sure that everyone's aware of how to adjust the system accordingly to get everybody paid correctly and the coverage reflected correctly. But I think that the building subs, as it stands right now, are used pretty good, and I think that adding more would just be a cost. Don't tell my boss I said that.
No, that's why I said, no, it's like enticing to have some more guarantee.
How does that rescheduling work, then? Like, is it just up to the principal to do that, or? We should have like an app or something, and the teacher come on their phone and tell them where to go, automate the whole process.
Well, it's all done through frontline.
It is?
So it's...
So the person would get a notification as soon as the, okay, good. And he doesn't have to pick up the phone or anything like that?
We do when we need to, because it's, you know, sometimes it's just more efficient that way, but the frontline system is pretty, pretty good in notifying folks and getting the communication out that way.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
So Tara, again, will see this on next week's, or the week after?
It will be on, the contract will be on tonight's Finance Committee meeting, and then it will be moved forward to next week's Board Agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, next up, Tara, is job descriptions.
So tonight, we have a number of job descriptions that we shared with you. We have the Director of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment. We have the Administrative Assistance in the Student Services Department, as well as the Administrative Assistance in the Business Office. Does anyone have any questions regarding the updates to these job descriptions?
All of them were, the ones that I went through, all of them, most of them are just changing.
Minimal.
Minimal changes?
Yes.
Anything, the teacher, Director of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment had a number of changes. Is that just reflective?
Of the new position.
I mean, nothing jumped out, but it's good. Has it changed? Okay. Yeah, it was just wording changes, so.
And these positions are filled already?
Yes, they are, they are filled. We are trying to have our job descriptions updated on a rotating basis, so every five years, unless someone leaves the position, and then we would take a look at the job description when, before the new employee would come into the role. Otherwise, every five years, we would like to make sure our job descriptions are updated.
And then these also would be on the April Board Agenda?
Yes, they will.
Okay. All right, and then moving on to Position Control.
So tonight, we are going to share with you some information about Position Control. I have Diane Miller with us tonight, and Donna Shemis. We have been working together to roll out Position Control in the district. So what is Position Control? Position Control is a systematic tracking and management of all authorized positions in the district, independent of the employee that's currently filling them. So Position Control will focus on the position and not the employee that is in the position. So the purpose is to align staffing with budgeted positions, maintain organizational structure and clarity, prevent over-hiring. Why it matters, it ensures fiscal responsibility, it supports data-driven staffing decisions, and it enhances compliance and audit readiness. So currently, we use Power School ERP, records, and applicant tracking. So Position Control key features. Position numbers will be linked to funding sources. So each position will be linked to a funding source. Real-time vacancy tracking. There will be a dashboard that I will be able to have as the Director of Human Resources, Mr. Dahlberg will be able to have, Mr. Barrios, Dr. Palmer, and everyone will have their own dashboard through Position Control that will show them what aligns directly with their position. So I will be able at any time to open this dashboard and see real-time vacancies. We'll be able to see, is there a building in the district that has more vacancies than another building does? Do we need to focus on that, and what that looks like for us when it comes to vacancy tracking?
How's that done now?
Right now, it's all done manually. So this will provide us with a dashboard that is kept up to date with real time. So if a position is filled, it will automatically change that dashboard when I look at it in the system.
So right now, it's through spreadsheets and...
So right now, yes, it is through spreadsheets, it's manual. We can pull cognizance reports, we can pull reports through records, but it's all about going in, pulling the reports, it's the time that it takes to be able to pull those reports every, every day, if that's what you're looking for, or once a week, if that's what you're looking for. Sometimes I go out to the website, and I look to see, okay, what positions are still posted, which ones have closed. And so this will be real-time vacancy tracking through this dashboard. Integration with payroll and benefits. Again, it will help us to align our positions to those budget codes through the Position Control system versus through ERP, where now, when an individual is hired, which I'm going to talk about this on the next slide, but when an individual is hired through the district, in our payroll office, they have to go in and select a budget code before, with Position Control. We will have those positions attached to a budget code, so when it's posted, now that budget code is already attached to the position. So that will help in our payroll department, they won't have to go in after the individual is hired and assign them a pay code in the ERP system. It'll automatically flow through Position Control. Customized reporting, again, from our dashboard that gives us all of that information through Position Control, that real-time information, we can now pull customized reporting. So our dashboard that we talked about every Personnel Committee meeting, that's all manual. We go in, we pull all that data manually, and then we upload it into the document that we've created in Canva to share the dashboard with you. We will now be able to pull all of that information from Position Control into a dashboard and present that information to you. As well as automated vacancy flagging tied to resignations and retirements. So when someone resigns right now in our record system, I will approve that resignation or that retirement, and then we wait for the building principal to go in and post that position. Position Control will automatically flag that, so that I'm aware that individual has not, or the principal administrator has not gone in and posted that position. So I will be able to see at all time, are we waiting for a position to be posted, how long is it taking us from the time when somebody resigns or retires to get that position posted? So our current workflow, we talked a little bit about this on the previous slide, a position or a vacancy is created, the position is then posted through Talented, the candidate is hired. When the candidate is hired through records and the onboarding takes place, it now will automatically push from Position Control into our ERP system. Right now, there's a lot of manual entry. Once someone is hired and they've gone through that onboarding, we manually input their information into the ERP system. This now will automatically push from Position Control into the ERP system. Updates will be tracked, so if someone asks us about a transfer, they're transferring to a position, or what position has this person been in previously, because we would like to see if they've been in this role and we can transfer them. We have to actually, Donna, Donna goes in and she completes a file audit. So we manually pull the individual's file and go back through the papers to see where that person has been, what position have they filled in the district. With Position Control, we will now be able to pull that employee's name up through our Position Control system, and it will list out every position they filled in the district for the whole time that they've worked here. As well as we will be able to see, if we're looking at a first grade position, we'll be able to pull that position up on Position Control, and it will show you every individual that filled that position in the district. So we'll be able to go back and see what employees filled what roles in the district that will help us with some of our staffing needs.
Would that go, would that be for before you start using the system, or we're just starting fresh?
It will be effective when we start the Position Control system.
So you won't have any...
So we won't have that back, but we will, moving forward, be able to utilize that data when we're looking at staffing changes. And again, it's going to help with that HR finance collaboration, because it will be making sure that the budgeting codes are correct for each one of our positions. Okay. So how will Position Control help the district? So there are a lot of ways that we will be able to benefit from having Position Control. So it'll improve budget accuracy, it aligns staffing decisions with approved budgeted positions, it prevents unintentional hiring or over-allocation of FTEs.
Does that happen, unintentional hiring?
So when you think about, yeah, unintentional hiring, well, what do you think about this? So if, if you have a grade level where, you know, your, your student numbers are dropping, now you're, you have, you've over-hired for those positions, and not on purpose, it's unintentional, because you hired based on what your student count or your needs were previously. But utilizing Position Control, you can forecast and you can plan. So we can plan moving forward, you know, do we need to shift someone from a grade level to another grade level, or what does that look like when you look at how many FTE positions you will need for your teachers?
So the system knows also how many kids are, or...
Well, we would, we would need to utilize that data to show. It is connected through Power School. We're not aware at this moment that it pulls from Power School, but that doesn't mean that in the future that it wouldn't pull from Power School at some point. Enhance transparency and accountability. So clear tracking of all positions, filled positions, vacant positions. It would provide easier audit trails for the HR department, payroll, and compliance reviews. Operational efficiency, this is something we talk about a lot. So it reduces that manual tracking and the spreadsheet reliance, it integrates seamlessly with the hiring and payroll. Currently, we track a lot through spreadsheets in the Human Resources Department, and so that provides a lot of room for human error. So this will alleviate some of that room for human error. Strategic workforce planning, it provides the real-time data to inform your hiring decision. It supports the long-term planning for program expansions and retirements. It strengthens the HR finance collaboration, again, ensuring that we are paying our teaching positions out of the right budget code, and our support staff positions out of the right budget code. So this is not just for teachers, this will be a district-wide Position Control.
How is that being done now?
Which, are you asked about aligning the positioning, the code, the payroll codes to, it's all manual.
It's all manual.
So when, again, when an individual is hired and they go through the onboarding process, they then get pushed over to the payroll department, and they assign them that pay code through adding that individual into our system. So now, with Position Control, you'll set up your positions and attach them directly to the pay code. So when we post and approve that a position is hired, it will already be attached to a pay code, it will, they won't have to do that in the payroll department once that individual is hired. Okay, timeline and implementation. So the launch time is post-board meeting, so board approval would be April the 24th, implementation would start the week of May the 5th. So the estimated rollout time for this program would be 90 days, give or take. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, sometimes it takes less time. We're hoping that from all of our staffing spreadsheets that we have from this year's staffing, that our staffing is accurate, and we will be able to have a pretty smooth implementation, but typical is 90 days implementation. So some key milestones. We've met with Power School, the Technology Department, to discuss system capabilities. We're hoping for board approval. We've created data documents for 25-26 staffing as a basis for Position Control implementation. So we worked very closely with Dr. Palmer... So, we worked very closely with Dr. Palmer, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Barrios, Mr. Delbert, Dr. Schei, to ensure that our staffing for next year, the documents that have been created are accurate to align with each one of our buildings. So May through August, system configuration. We would complete a Position Control audit and provide user access setup. We would then have administrative training, which would lie in the Human Resources Department and the Business Office. There would be minimal change for our administrators when it comes to posting positions. So the majority of the training for Position Control would live within the HR and the Business Office. Data validation, so again, going back over that data that we've already worked through to make sure that our staffing for the '25-'26 school year is accurate and just review. Workflow testing, and then we would have that final testing and communication that the system is ready and we would roll out the system for the next school year.
Oh, so I get to talk about the manual part, so thank you, Tara. So, so what's this been called? So, this is an additional module to our EFP system, which is payroll, business and HR. So this is an existing module that we're now going to be purchasing. So there's a subscription price from May to August, as Tara said. Our big contract for E Finance Plus or ERP begins September 1st. So they're going to prorate this from May 1st to August 31st. So that's the actual contract that you're going to see on tonight's Finance Committee meeting. So total is just under $8,000, and that includes the implementation. So there's a one-time implementation fee, so we can get this all set up, and that is approximately $4,700. And then $3,200 is for the actual subscription of it from May till August. That's already been budgeted, so Tara does have that in her budget because we've been anticipating this coming around. So there's, there is money budgeted for the '24-'25. And then in the '25-'26, Power School is changing the way they're doing, like they're bundling. So kind of think of it like Allstate where we're bundling home and auto. So they're doing what they call a, yeah, Daycom, State Farm. They're doing what they call like an all-inclusive now. So not only will we get Position Control as part of like a regular package, but there's also a few other modules that would originally have been like for add-on, just like this one had been. So there's like workflow, there's something with the procurement card. So there's a couple other things that we'll be able to explore maybe for next year as well. So between last year's full amount of, I think it's $120,000 for EFP, it's going up to $125,000. So it'll be a $5,000 jump for the year, so.
For this add-on?
For this, but it's more than just this. So again, it's kind of the bundle. So, so it'll be $8,000 for this year and then an additional $5,000 for next.
Reoccurring is the $5,000?
Correct.
Plus this term.
Do we have it in the budget?
Yeah, and that actually comes out of the Technology Budget. So Tara had the Position Control in her budget, and then this will come out of my budget for next year.
So are any of these systems that we talked about, do they encompass the review system? Or like if there's a personnel issue, what system manages that?
Can you clarify review?
Performance reviews or assessments, yeah.
So the assessment is the what, PAE-TEP system?
Professional Employees Administration.
Yes.
That is through PAE-TEP.
Okay, so not connected to any of these?
That is a separate system. And that falls under my budget in my department.
Does it integrate with that?
The stuff that does performance review does not integrate with that. I don't know that Power School has a performance tracker for professional employees. But it's something we consider the frontline. Frontline offers it that we use for subs.
Different systems, more you got of data entry, the more you got of, you know, so it's an interesting question.
But it's also, you know, I think we can go back and look at what the costs are of these. You know, we've used PAE-TEP for a number of years and have kind of modified it to meet our specific goals within the district. But it's something I think that should be open to review. It's not a bad idea.
Issues we have to deal with as a board, you know, and we're wondering where these things go.
Evaluations are paper at this time. We're working through Records, which is another program that we currently use in the HR department to create a form for our support staff evaluation so that they can be shifted to electronic. So we're in the process of creating.
And again, this add-on is, it's all from the same software vendor?
It's all Power School.
Power School, okay.
I was going to ask you how you're going to pay for it, but I expected it to be more than $4,000, $5,000. So it just sounds like the savings, you know, all the paperwork and the mistakes and more than pay for it. So I had no idea it was that inexpensive.
Since it's linked to things like Power School, is it having, like, is it meant to work for school environments to help with projecting, like understanding, trying to keep people in their building, things like that? And what, like, I do agree, having this in a database is going to be a lot nicer than like a big whiteboard of everything. Does it come up with suggestions? Like, does it say you could save some spots here? Or is it more like a query database?
Yeah, I don't think it does in kind of like an AI or anything.
Not even AI, I mean, it could just do some modeling.
I don't, I don't, no, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent.
Well, once you have it in a database, you can do it too. But what is, I think Ron was getting to this, but I'm not sure if we're asking the same question. How's all the data getting in in the first place? Like, because, can it be loaded from Power School? Can it be?
For the original?
Yeah, like to start.
Like to start? So we'll take, that's what we'll work with the implementation specialists. They'll take their spreadsheets.
That would be me.
And then we'll upload it. So yes, we don't have to key it all.
Yes, good. And will staff have access to this? Like, will they each have a profile that they could go in and be like, my information's accurate sort of thing? Okay.
They do have that already for other parts of it. So you can go in and look at your employee data to make sure that it's up-to-date, your finance stuff. Like, all of those things are in there. This side of it, though, is the Position Control. We need this very much.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm just having questions on it. So then, along those lines, if it might be easy to ask the staff to enter their own work experience in a way that that can be loaded over if it's not access to this, but like in Power School? However, they would do it?
So the staff data, current staff data, we should be able to pull out of ERP. One thing that I would like to highlight about Position Control as well is we can, in the system, list what certifications you need for each position. And so as new people get entered into that Position Control System, it will alert you if their certifications do not align with the position. So that will also help to make sure that teachers have the correct certifications to be teaching those positions, especially as we work through those transfers in the district. You know, you're always thinking, right now, we're lucky that Donna printed out all of our staffing books for this year. Each one of cabinet members have a staffing book that shares in each building what all their teachers are certified. So as we're looking through staffing, we're like, oh, we need to check to make sure, is this teacher certified to teach this course, right? But utilizing Position Control, you can actually put into the system what certifications you need for each position. So then as you start to shift people and their certifications are listed in the system, it will push back and say that that person has not met the criteria to be able to teach that course. So that will definitely help with staffing. We won't need, again, those manual spreadsheets that we're using right now to make sure that we're capturing all the correct information.
Now, this is just for current employees, not prior employees?
It is not for prior employees, it's for current employees.
So anyone that's worked here in the past, you'd have to go through a paper database of a little bit of information about them, depending on what reason it would have come out there.
Well, if they're a current employee working now, their information will be put in. But if they left the district, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't enter that information.
Okay.
So I'm just very curious about this because, so if, if we had something that, you know, we have our enrollment projections and stuff like that, can it merge that type of information and say like, you need one more fifth-grade teacher in this school, or?
So we're not, we're not a hundred percent, we were actually talking about that before this meeting and how we could take that information, that student data information to say, okay, so next year, we only need two first-grade teachers, but we're going to need three second-grade teachers because you can use the student data information to show. And we don't know if we can upload it, that's a question we have still for Power School, but it is something that we'll be looking into. So that forecasting to see how many teachers we will need in each grade level based on the student enrollment for years in the future.
Do you use spreadsheets for that now?
Right now, we do. We look at our stu-, Dr. Palmer and I, we're both needing to see how many, what students we have in each grade level and how many teachers we need and if we need to do shifting for involuntary or voluntary transfers.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think this is great, migrate so much information, streamline, it's a lot cleaner. It seems like it'll be easier for you, less, like you said, human error. I'm surprised that it's taken us this long to get something like this and we have, so, it sounds great.
Good, thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
I'm going to just stay over here.
Yep, one more item, right? Yeah, so we'll move on to our final agenda item, which is the HR dashboard.
Okay, so this is the dashboard for February 25th through March 24th. And I'm just going to quickly walk through the dashboard and then I will share with you a summary that I have regarding our recruitment efforts for this year. So, positions posted, we have a total of 19. So year-to-date, we have posted 94 positions in the district. Positions filled, 32, and we have posted 137. Resignations, six. Year-to-date, we've had 47. And retirements, this month we had three. And we, year-to-date, have had 32. We always see that retirement number go up after February because February 1st is that deadline for teachers to submit their retirement.
So you have 100, sorry, you filled 137 positions, but posted less than that?
So, sometimes a position is posted, but it's left open. So when we talk about bus drivers, that position is open and it's ongoing.
So the post was done a long time ago.
Well, the post stays open. So numerous people can post to that position. So we would be filling more than one person for that position. So that's why those numbers go up.
Thought it was an accidental hiring.
So our leave of absence information is here. Sorry, it's a little bit small. Again, benefit numbers that you can see, the number of employees we have on each one of our benefits. And then our recruiting and onboarding information is presented here for you. Upcoming recruitment events, they are now passed. So I am going to share a little bit of information with you about our recruiting events. So, we participated in a total of nine career events connecting with hundreds of prospective candidates and raising awareness about opportunities in our district. We began with Temple University on February the 21st, where Ms. O'Reilly, Human Resource Secretary, and Mr. Sableke, High School House Principal, engaged with 27 candidates out of the total of 98 candidates that attended that career fair. Next was Meridian University on March 7th, where Ms. Raver, ELA Supervisor, and Mr. Vogel, Principal at Bedminster, met with 10 candidates from a total of 35 attendees. On March the 11th, Ms. Mossman, Ms. Baker, Principal at Sellersville, and Mr. Ware, Supervisor of Special Education, attended Millersville University's Teacher Recruitment Day, where we connected with 28 out of 245 attendees. One of our largest events was Clifton University on March 17th, where myself and Ms. Douglas met with 54 candidates out of 208 attendees. The Bucks County Teacher Recruitment Fair was held on March 18th. Dr. Schei, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning and Assessment, myself and Dr. Coria Lessa, Principal at Central Middle School, met with 26 candidates. Out of a total of 369 resumes were received. Later that week, on March 21st, Mr. Hughes, House Principal at Penridge High School, and Ms. O'Reilly participated in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Job Fair at Bluesburg University, where they met with 18 candidates out of 219 attendees. On April 7th, the Penn State Education Career Days was attended again by myself, Mr. Barrios, and Ms. Ford, Principal at Grass Elementary. We met with 52 out of 197 attendees. The next day, on April 8th, Dr. Coria Lessa and I attended the Educator Recruitment Fair, where there was a candidate pool of 87 attendees. We will be hosting a Penridge Job Fair on May 20th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Penridge High School. We are also in the planning stages of holding a Bus Driver Recruitment Fair on Saturday, May 17th. We are pleased to share with you that 73 Penridge graduates have applied for positions within our school district since March 1st. As of now, three of those applicants are being recommended for approval at our April Board Meeting, while many others are still actively moving through the interview process.
So those 73 got automatic interviews, right?
Yes, they were for automatic interviews. Some of those individuals applied to numerous positions. I know that I was talking with Diana Miller today, and she said she had an abundance of Penridge current students or Penridge grads that have applied for her summer positions. So we're excited to welcome them to the...
Great, wonderful.
Hey, thank you.
Tara?
I just impressed with your organization in trying to move it forward and coming up with these ideas and streamlining things.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again. And our next Personnel Committee is scheduled for May the 7th, 2025.
You're still rolling? You're still rolling.
Do you have any public comments? Think so, public comment? Anybody have public comments?
Anybody? All right.
All right. So, first up is the annual testing for lead and drinking water. Results of that, that study being done, Mr. Bramble?
Yep. So, in the past, over the past couple of years, we've done testing at each location for testing for lead and drinking water. And this year, you'll notice that maybe we've done a little more than what you've seen in the past because our goal was to hit the remaining sites that were left at each school. So that's why there's such a large list of places that we've gone. Out of all the sites that we tested this year, only two came back as testing positive. So we ended up replacing the fixtures and retested them, and they came back clear. So that actually completed all of the corporate resources that we have been testing over the span of the past couple of years.
So you've gone through the whole district?
We've gone through the entire district. So we, Sean and I had a discussion where we were determining if we had taken a break or do we proceed forward and keep testing? And we decided that we were going to go back to the beginning and continue testing.
At the same rate or a slower rate, or?
So, I think what I'd like to do more forward is increase the rate of testings that we're doing. So instead of just doing five a year, do a little bit more and add, do a little bit more than five per location just so we can get more locations done and testing.
And the bubblers that you replaced in Rooms 5 and 6 at Bedminster, is that the entire unit, or is that just?
So we end up doing, we'll replace the bubbler and then we test again and we still find traces of it. But sometimes, depending on the date of the fixtures, we'll just replace everything.
Entire fixture? Right, so this, so these will just replace the entire fixture?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Wasn't that, we were, this was a few years when we pushed up the testing?
We've been doing the testing for a number of years.
Yes, we tried to speed it up.
There was, at one point, one, one year, we had, I believe it was West Rock. West Rock, that a number of them failed and the board asked Mr. Harper to go back and test the rest of the building. So we did the entire...
Mr. Harper to go back and test the rest of the building. So we did the entire building.
So when it fails, is it, how bad is it? Do you know?
So usually what we've, the, the part, it's parts per billion is the unit of measurement. So whenever it is at fifteen or more, that is when you're supposed to replace fixtures and retest. Um, one of these were over, uh, they were significantly over the fifteen parts per billion. And one of them was under, but it was so close that I just re- I figured we would just do it anyway. Because if it was close enough to, uh, almost hit the fifteen, I just figured, if it's close enough now, then it's going to be there in a matter of time. So why would we just go?
If it's really over, is that a significant health issue or?
No, no, it's, no, there's no health concern. I mean, over a prolonged period of time, if it goes unaddressed, it can be. But the fact that we're testing so frequently, there's never, there's no danger.
Okay. Is this coming from the, the actual components of the water, uh, disposal? Or is it part of the system? Like, is the water contaminated? Now, they gave you the contamination from the parts being used?
I would say perhaps if it wasn't the, the fact that our fixtures being swapped out are resulting in us getting the, the good test results, that once we replace the fixtures and we're not getting the readings that we were, I would say it's not the water, it's the fixtures themselves.
Uh, just, yeah.
Probably see it multiple.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, yeah, all of, all of those, all of those. The fixtures were swapped out and, yeah, extremely, some of them are very old.
As I remember, every time you switch it out, it passes on all the ones that were failed.
Yeah, five of seven passes. Makes me think of that it's just the fixtures.
Yeah, I don't believe we, this entire series of testing, we had anything fail a second.
Right, yeah, since in my time here, I haven't seen us had a, have to retest over and over again after we've done an initial replacement. But the cycle is every, is it every five years that we have to? So once, so according to the EPA website, once it's every, you test once every five years. The reason why we were going to go back to the beginning and start over again is because since the beginning of this process, since we started, some of these were five years ago, which is why we were going to go back to the beginning of where it started and continue from there.
So you're following the EPA guidelines?
Mm-hmm.
So the law requires us to do one of two things. We either test or we don't test and we talk about it in a public meeting, that we didn't test.
So you either test.
For testing.
So you either test or you tell your public that you're not testing.
That's, um, that's a great option.
So, so we test.
Which is why my recommendation is that we just, we continue to do it, we continue doing it, but maybe at more than the five per year because people doing five sources per building.
What is the cost per unit that you, the testing?
I can get the exact pricing, I can get the exact pricing on that, but we send it out to, we send it out to Sarah, Water Testing Service in Jersey. And they do all the, the lab testings in the labs. And usually it's a two, two-week turnaround time. They'll send me all the results and then we know whether we're good or if we have to go back and replace fixtures. But I can get the specific pricing for each of, uh, testing.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
This group alone? If you don't want to have it, I don't know, exactly, I can find out.
But it's testing at the fixture, not at the source, like there's not, we get, we get the test results from, like, uh, North Penn Water.
The only, the only reason why I ask the question, it just seems weird for me that we're, that there's still building components that have lead in them. And they're using for facilities that are drinking water in schools. I, I'm just having a difficult time. Who would even buy the replacer part that has lead in the first place?
Well, the, the components for replacing these lines with.
No, I, I, yeah, I get it from, from older units, but from a newer unit standpoint, and I, I agree, you should do additional testing. But the newer units shouldn't have any lead components in them, where lead would show up. So the question is this, if you put a unit in and you go back and you test, and now you have lead again, and you know that the union did, the unit that you replaced it with didn't have lead, then we've got another serious problem.
Well, the problem also could be it's coming from deeper into the system.
I understand.
Right, and that's where I was, like, we're getting the results from the Water Authority. So we're, like, mixing the two of them together, the Water Authority plus the, the fixture itself.
But it's not lead.
Wait, I feel like, if it was more systemic, more of them would test positive in a building, like, you'd see a lot of them.
All right, cool. So at the rate you're doing, will you do everyone every five years? Is that what the, that's the law, right? Okay, so whatever rate you do would be.
All right, uh, moving on to maintenance and transportation uniforms in RFP.
It's a big difference there.
So, yeah, we have, uh, we had an array of, we had three different bids come in and, uh, you see in the uniform, the maintenance and transportation uniforms, one there was a, they weren't bid.
Clem, is this local or, or is it, just sounds like a local.
I do believe they are a local vendor. They have been the one that we've used in the past, that they consistently end up being a little bitters.
I think they're from Happy Hill Brown. I can't quote you on that.
I don't, I'm not exactly sure where, but I know they are.
I swear I've driven past the sign that says Clemens down that way. Um, and this was apples for apples or?
Pretty close. Yeah, i- it's pretty close to what we were already working on.
I mean, when the, when the, like, because this, this difference, like, seven thousand between Clemens and Blank, like, was basically apples to apples, was what they were.
Pretty much all three of these that we ended up having go out are, it's the group that we're already currently working with.
Gotcha.
So even the Emergency Generator Inspection and Maintenance Modern is the group that we're already currently working with and it was same rate.
Right.
And then the Exter- Pest Control Service, um, we put it out there just for good measure, just to see who would come back. And Northeast is the exact group that we're working with now. Um, and the other groups that we have reached out to didn't place a bid, but they have typically historically come back higher than that.
So you have bid them before and they gave you, that was one, because you only got one response, so that doesn't mean.
Yeah, we ended up putting out to these other groups, uh, asking these other groups to bid, um, and the current group that we're working with was the only one that put a bid.
Now, is that an approved supplier or are these just, how do you determine who to put it out to?
So we'll put it into ones that we've interacted with before in the past, like Terminex was a, uh, contract we had for Pest Control prior to Northeast. And I believe the last time it went out, they were significantly higher than Northeast. We ended up putting it out just to see who, you know, how everything would come back and, and start ranking the pricing.
It's just, it's like, it's good to have at least two respondents. I mean, this is the best price, but we don't really know that, so.
Yeah, I know. And, and I would have liked to see another bits come back, but I mean, we, we did get out to multiple groups to try to just work it.
And this is for all the buildings?
Correct.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Big kitchens, stuff like that.
And you've used them before?
Yes. Yeah, Northeast is the current group we're already operating with.
Just dumb question, are they co-stars? Is that?
I'm not sure.
Are these co-stars? I was just curious if possibly they were under co-starting or not. Well, that, I mean, that took care of Emergency Generators and Pest Control in one, one swoop, so. Um, we have obsolete items for review for these high schools, it looks like, uh, football?
Yeah, we just have one list this month, um, some football, uh, equipment, shoulder pads, uh, practice pants, girdles and thigh pads and tail pads that are no longer usable.
So you're going to auction them off?
Yeah.
You'd be, you'd only been around.
I think that's going to go to scrap.
We're going to go to scrap.
But we do auction off almost everything. Try not to get too much.
All right, well, that wraps up facilities. Uh, next meeting is scheduled for May seventh.
All right, keep going. Moving on to finance. No public comment. You don't have to. I'm not going out there again either. So move right along, get right into it. And we'll start tonight with a review of contracts for approval. Mr. Dogg.
All right, we have a number of contracts tonight. Um, the first, uh, contract is Bucks One Academy, uh, for two special education slots, uh, for next year. Cost is two-twenty-five, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, uh, per day. It was one-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents this year.
Is that reserving spot or is it two kids that are identified? How does that?
Two prepaid slots, so.
Two prepaid, they're, are using it, we don't use it. But if we do, we get in right away. Is that, so you?
They still, well, let me change that. Kid, we still have to submit, uh, their paperwork and it has to be reviewed by Bucks and not by.
Right, they accept them.
Yeah, they have to be accepted.
But there, is there two spots being filled now there or?
So we have one kid that will return there next year. And so we basically have one slot open for the year.
Okay. And if we didn't have that, how long does it take to get somebody in there?
It's quick. Then, I'd say reasonably speaking, seven to ten school days.
No, no, if you didn't have that.
I think, I think when Mr. Weber asks, let's say we only have one boat space, it's filled.
And then someone else?
We add somebody and what's the wait time?
Typically a week or two.
So why do we pay for the one if it's not?
So we have one kid that'll return in twenty-five, twenty-six. And then, so we have essentially all year to add a second student. And if we add a third student, then we have to pay their regular rate and have a discount.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. So you're betting that you're going to.
Ten percent. It's not a huge, it's, it's not half off, but it's about ten percent.
And in the past, have we used both of those slots every year?
Typically three.
Three.
Oh, so we do. And if we don't use a slot, we just lose out that money?
Yes, and that's why we went back.
So it's not a time you're trying to save a little money, but risk not filling?
Slight risk.
We usually fill more potentially. So like you said, we have two spots that we hold, but we've filled in the past three, so we haven't lost.
Sometimes four. Uh, in Lakeside, for example, which is the next one, you'll see that we're going to ten.
Right.
We were at twelve this year. We have twelve kids there now, but eight will be returning in twenty-five, twenty-six. So we have two available slots. So we went down with that. So each of those three, three selected schools, we went down with the slots to look at four to five-year trend of what we've had and then be a little bit more reasonable and fiscally responsible.
And they all give us just.
In the past, we've lost money as a result of paying for additional slots that we never used. And that is not something we want to obviously do now.
Not if we continuously don't fill it like that.
Right. And we always get discounts. So for all these, we'll get a discount. The Lakeside will get a discount too.
For the ones, right. So for Lakeside, for the ten we paid for, but if, let's say, for example, we had an eleven and twelve kid, for that eleven and twelve kid, we lose that discount.
Right. But you still have availability. So we're not buying availability, we're just buying, like, discount.
Yes, correct.
Have we lost any money this year?
Not this year.
Okay, that's great.
And it's ten percent for Lakeside?
That's, that's the standard rate, is a ten percent discount from the schools, which is fair enough.
Well, we should get more.
You'd think, but.
Sorry, I think, yeah, you want to go on to Lakeside? I hear if there's any questions.
Yeah, so Lakeside, as Ernest was just talking about, we're changing from twelve to ten slots. That's why you see the decrease in price there, uh, from four-twenty-five, or two-four-twenty-five from four, I mean, two-thousand. And then the in-school counselors were dropping from six-point-six to five-point-six, uh, for next year. And you can see the decrease in cost, uh, for, uh, the counselors and the to- grand total cost, uh, to Lakeside is dropping, uh, from a million-one to nine-million-sixty-two thousand for next year, uh, because of those decreases in the, uh, spots. The next contract is Keystone Freedom Academy. Uh, this is reservation of placement for three students, uh, at cost of a hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and eight cents.
Same thing, this is reserving spots?
Yes.
And how many we use this year?
Let me check. I won't give you accurate information.
If you want to keep going.
I assume it's the same notion.
Sure. The next, uh, letter D is a settlement agreement for student identified as twenty-twenty-five dash twenty. And then we move on to the Music Theater International for South Middle School, uh, for the spring of twenty-twenty-six, a thousand dollars, one-thousand-and-twenty-four dollars, that's due to pay for the, uh, music theater. Letter F is Justin's yearbook agreement for North Middle School for twenty-twenty-six through twenty-eight. Uh, again, that's parent paid. Next one is Kenkor. This is elevator maintenance, uh, from July first, twenty-five through July first, twenty-eight. Cost is ninety-one-hundred dollars per year, uh, twenty-seven-thousand-three-hundred dollars for the, for years. And this is an extension at the current rates.
Is that for all schools or which ones had elevators, I guess?
This will be all the elevators.
All the locations.
Ninth, yeah.
That includes the, uh, wheelchair ones as well, except fiber and grass.
Diamond grass.
Right, exactly.
I was going to say, I was going to go there.
Okay.
H is Lehigh Valley Events and Productions. This is, uh, stage, stage stair presenter monitors for the high school graduation, uh, on June fourth. It's two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Uh, this is an add-on contract, uh, for some additional, uh, pieces that are needed. Bucks IU for the early childhood program. This is the MOU with the IU that we do each year for next year. And the next contract is also Bucks IU. This is the Head Start, uh, Grantee MOU, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six. And that is at no cost. Uh, there, there are no costs at the district.
Are both of them no cost?
There's only one, so.
Yeah.
Can I ask, Chris, you brought this up. Didn't you send an email about the solicitor reviewing a two-hundred-dollar contract?
Yes.
Because I thought it was an interesting question.
Actually, you know what, I even, that, I, sorry, I'm glad you even called me on that because the, uh, that contract for two-hundred-and-eighty dollars, that's only, when I looked at that, sorry, that's only half of the cost, correct? Because when I went down and looked, I'll go ahead and pull it up here. The retainer payment dues fifty percent, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars, but it says the final total is five-hundred-and-sixty. Should that have been?
When are you looking at H? I think, Lehigh Valley?
Yes.
So does the, what does the solicitor do with a two-hundred-and-eighty-dollar contract? Just, I mean, if he spends an hour on it or a half hour, it's worth more than the contract.
I think it can be into, um, point-two increments of an hour or quarterly, fifteen. Very rarely in a contract like this will we be charged billable hour. Um, but I do feel comfortable having our contracts reviewed. I know some school districts have, um, a threshold, and it could be twenty-five-hundred dollars. Anything below twenty-five-hundred dollars would not require review. Um, however, I think it's, um, I think it's responsible to have our solicitor take a look, um, at our contracts, read the fine print, and change orders and things of that nature can get very, very expensive. Um, Mr. Dogg, if you have any to add to that?
Yeah, uh, we, we have him look at everything, even the MOUs that don't cost us anything. He looks at them just to make sure that the district's protected and is not at risk. Liability, yeah. Yeah, it's just, um, it's good oversight.
Agreed.
Good oversight because I, I don't have a law degree, um, so I certainly try to do my best, but there's a lot of things I don't know about contracts, so. Uh, and you're right, letter H should be five-hundred-and-sixty dollars, uh, which is a tight though.
Yep, that's kind of what I figured, but, yeah, to say, threw me off when I saw the two-eighty and it was reviewed by solicitor. I was like, that's almost the same cost as solicitor. So an hour would double the cost on the contract. So that's, you know, that kind of threw me off. Sorry, moving on.
Uh, down to letter K, Bucks County Intermediate Unit. This is our annual special education services agreement. Uh, the cost, uh, for next year is four-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars.
Well, why did it go down? Just number of students or?
Yeah, so it's, uh, the, based on the number of students and the services that we're purchasing from them for the next year. Believe me, there is a lot of time put in by Ernest and his staff on this one.
For this number or, you mean, how many students that?
How many students projected for the following school year?
Do you know how many students would be covered in that?
Yes.
If you don't have it now, you're just.
Well, I have it. So projected, projected as of today, at whatever time we're at, we're projecting twenty, um, actually, forty-four students for the Bucks County, um, IU, whereas this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we have fifty-four students. You also have to consider the level of services that they receive.
It's an iris, this one, but, yeah. So that's a hundred thousand. So that's a hundred thousand dollars of students?
Some programs could be in the neighborhood of forty to fifty thousand, all the way to a little over a hundred.
Well, that's just average, the forty-four, four point four million, about a forty-four.
Okay. All right, letter L is HootSuite Incorporated Social Media Management and Data Analytics. Analytics, twenty-five to twenty-eight, seven thousand dollars per year, twenty-one thousand dollars total over the three years.
What do they actually do? Just out of curiosity.
I'll let Dave jump in on that.
We get to stop this at all?
Kids are behind it now.
Need to hear from Dave.
So you actually saw this one. This was, we got a trial run of this about two months ago, when I did my part of the superintendent report, and it's, it's a workflow program. So if you, if you hear, we have twelve official Facebook posts, pages. We have official Instagram page and a LinkedIn account. It's an official account that we just started. What this software does is allow me to, instead of taking between five and ten minutes for each post, do the quick map, that would, you know, that's a long time, so you get all the pictures, everything else, this one program lasts everything at once. So it customizes it to LinkedIn, and gets all the hashtags for LinkedIn to get more job applicants looking at our school district profile on LinkedIn. It customizes it for the Instagram crowd, and then I can actually select each individual Facebook page, that's the official page of each school, and hit them all at once. And if you remember back, at the top of our website, that banner is tied into Facebook, so therefore, it's then hitting all the Facebook webpages at once, as well as the social media, creating those, those big social media loops. So it's a huge opportunity for us. This agreement, this was already budgeted, by the way, so this is part of the budget that, that we made for this year. This agreement allows us early access to it with the Net Sixty Agreement. That's what this is. So this allows us to get access to it on May first, so, because I fell in love with it after one week of the trial. And the analytics part of it, Bob, what it did was, it gave us rankings. It said, all right, you are getting five, six posts a week. That's how you compare to Central Bucks. This is how you compare to Centennial, and we were top ranked, so it showed us just how far our reach was going. Leah, I answered one of your questions earlier. It has AI incorporated. It will tell you how your post is toned, what tone you wanna go to, and it has AI assistant on it, so you can tone it and write it for anyone.
So you're not using it right now, your trial ran?
Correct. Yeah, trial was a week. And we did all that in a week, when I, I showed it to the board and had that list of how we ranked. That was a one-week trial.
Thank you, Dave. Next contract, letter M, this is Sweet Stevens and Cats. This is for the legal consultation agreement. This is twelve thousand dollars. And this is for the annual pool council agreement with Sweet Stevens and Cats for the special education. That is something that we renewed and started again this year, after not having it for a few years. And Ernest is very helpful. This, this program is very helpful to you.
Extremely. As an example, it allows us to get our special ed council in front of teachers, administrators, counselors, special ed supervisors, obviously, to do, I believe, up to six trainings in a school year. They, Tom Warner did a session, multiple sessions during Harvest Your Learning this year, which was extremely helpful for us that.
And this pays for that, is it?
Yes.
That's added, inserted.
That's the added service.
Hopefully, have less settlements in the future.
Yes, yes.
And finally, the last contract, letter N, GHR Healthcare. This is for nurse and para, para school staffing. The fee schedule attached, this is for substitutes and so forth. Just another avenue to try to fill spaces when we're, we're unable to get subs.
And then the position of control, we already talked about that.
Yes. Did I miss one?
ESS, oh, the ESS is... Okay, so that all, covers it all?
Yeah, I did miss that one.
Student Activity Club?
Before we go on, Ernest had information he was looking at.
Yeah, so it was Keystone Freedom Academy. So we had five students, and believe it or not, or not, some of those students returned to Penridge, so in a way, we, we lost money, because you think about the number, the cost for the slots. We had students that returned to Penridge, which is ultimately the goal.
Right.
You want your students to return, but then we lost those prepaid slots, because they returned at the start of the school year. So progress...
But you're only putting two in.
Right, that's why, that's why we're putting two in, because of the amount of money that you save, that ten percent isn't great enough when our goal is to bring students back, so that's the reason we lost the number of slots. In the event that happens again at any school.
Okay.
Yes, my apologies, I didn't miss those, those two on the end, the power school with the ESS that we had already talked about.
Okay, moving on to the new Student Activity Club.
Yep, we have a request for a new Student Activity Club, Epic, the Musical Junior Digital Production. Please don't ask.
I kinda was curious.
So can you tell us more about that, Kenny?
It says for the high school?
Yes, please.
Okay, moving on then. No one has objections to the Epic Club, which I...
There is a description there on the form.
Oh, it is? I didn't, I didn't...
Oh, that's a spicy.
Yep.
We will get on to the highlight of the evening, the general fund budget review. Pupil Services is up first.
So Ryan, thank you for stating, is it a lot of the highlight of the evening, or is it?
We'll let you know, we'll let you know after everybody goes.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. What we're gonna look at first, the first couple of slides shows you general data and information from two different series that dominate the student services budget. So the first is, we talked a little bit about this during earlier portion when we were looking at contracts. But if you look at this particular data, this is the number of students who are attending charter or cyber charter schools. So you look and you see the COVID year where it was high, and you look at the last four years, and compare it to the present day. We had a slight dip, and these are for regular education students, so the eleven hundred series. The next slide will show you the twelve hundred series.
Do you know what that cost us?
Yes, I do. So for general ed kids, it's a little over fifteen thousand dollars per student.
Right, I was looking for a total, a grand total, but you don't have to do it too many hours.
It's in there.
It is, okay.
It's a common attraction. And again, just for the purposes of this slide, this is the eleven hundred series. That second part of the slide, all end placements, those are court adjudications, so something that we have no control over, but as you can see, clearly, we have law to buy these students.
When, for the ones that are the charter schools, do they have to give a reason, like, why they're going to the charter schools, or? I'm sorry?
They just tell you.
Okay.
Right, they just, unfortunately.
And do we know how many of them are doing cyber versus?
Brick and mortar?
Yeah, brick and mortar.
I don't, but I can find out.
Is there a one that's very popular, that they go to as a charter school, or? I guess I'm just looking at why they're going there and what we can do to...
I think there's various reasons, some, um, mental health reasons.
For charter?
Yeah, for charter and cyber charter. Often, it's, they don't feel comfortable in the school environment. They may have had a bad experience in elementary school, in middle school, and they just feel more comfortable in the, in the cyber.
Well, I'm not sure, yeah, I understand the cyber part, but just, well, go ahead.
So if I may, the current enrollment I have for cyber charter enrollment is ninety-eight.
For next year?
For this year, right now.
About a hundred and forty-three.
Oh, a hundred and forty-three, okay, thank you, thank you.
Right now, we have ninety-eight enrolled in cyber.
But it's fifteen thousand regardless of it's cyber.
It could be higher, it depends, and this is where you hear about this being discussed in Harrisburg, so if a child has an IEP and they're attending a cyber charter school, it could be higher.
Thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Correct, and there's talk in the legislature now about reducing that, having reform. Last year, it was supposed to be potentially eight thousand dollars. But that did not materialize. This year, there's talk of maybe capping that rate at ten thousand dollars.
That would be huge.
But these aren't students who are showing, like, we can't fulfill their academic needs or their decision.
And we actually have an in-house Penridge cyber program, so definitely next year, we need to marshal our forces to try to attract and re-engage these families to at least talk about returning to Penridge, having access to a school counselor, having access to our facilities if the student wants to play on a sports team or earning a Penridge diploma. So we need to finalize some plans on our end to actively engage families and students.
So that was my next question too, that even, so even if they're not doing the Penridge cyber, what, what other services are we still offering? Like, do they get their diploma from Penridge if they're?
No.
They get it from the cyber school they're going to?
Correct.
And how about, like, extracurricular activities?
They do not have access to the extracurriculars if they're enrolled in a different cyber program.
If they're in ours.
But if they're in a just cyber program. So we definitely need to do more pick and shovel work to get, to get, just minimally engage families and students.
I think there's a big opportunity for that, kind of marketing the benefits of it. We keep the money, and, you know, it can help with our school, and so...
I think that's a pretty good idea to do that.
Compared to the cost, if you attend a brick and mortar, it's just shy of forty thousand. If it's a true cyber school, it's a little over thirty-four thousand for special education.
Any specialty, is that, even if a person has an IEP where they need occupational therapy once a week?
That's just for the education.
No, but, so it doesn't matter, when it's forty thousand, doesn't matter how much the...
Doesn't matter what the disability is.
What the disability, so there's somewhere, it would be a lot less, but, but we're required to pay. So if there was any kind of graduate scare, it would also help us, but it's a fixed number, right?
Yes.
Doesn't help us.
I, I think it's a great idea to market our cyber program to these, to the families that are listed here. Do we have any kind of program established at this point to approach the...
I believe there were efforts made in the past. There have been no efforts since I've arrived, but like I said, there will be...
You've got law on your plate, you understand that.
We will be re-engaging this summer.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think it's, I'd rather see it here with us than go somewhere else. I mean, I really think it's a, it's a great concept, and we should continue to move forward.
Thank you, point well taken.
And this again is a review of, when you look at the Bucks IU and our projected enrollment pair for next year, with forty-four students. And in the current year, it's for fifty-four students. So some of those students, different ages, aged out, with their twenty-second birthday. And then projecting ahead also for the other disciplines, we're projecting twenty-four students, which is a slight dip from where we are now currently at thirty-four students.
Sorry, the BCIU placements, is that?
Eighteen to twenty-two.
All right, that's not?
Most of those students.
It's not inclusive of BCIU in Penridge?
No, it is.
That forty-four, I mean, like, like elementary BCIU classes?
Yes, this is everything.
The forty-four is everything, right?
So, I'm starting backwards. So if you look at the budget history, this is what it's looked like over the last four school years, and the proposed budget has gone up ten percent from last school year to this school year. And the next series of slides will go through each series. Again, we're gonna start with the alleging eleven hundred series, which is the first slide I showed you, and then we go to the twelve hundred series, which is the second slide, the one right before this. But total budget, this is what we have, twelve point one million dollars proposed. These are the different series associated with the overall budget. Eleven hundred and twelve hundred being the most significant cost associated with this student services budget, which we'll show you shortly. Each series, you'll see a similar slide where it talks about, or shows you, the proposed budget and compares it to the last few school years. So you get a reference point to where we are and what the variance is from last year to this year. These are all of the factors that account for the twelve hundred series.
Was that the one you just, twelve hundred is the one you just slipped out?
So the twelve hundred series, a part of that, a big part of that budget is the special ed kids who are in charter schools, brick and mortar, cyber charter, and the BCIU.
So, to go back a slide, you had the regular education eleven hundred series. So that proposed budget is for the regular education children that are not here, that are at, so this is all, okay, that are on charters. This has nothing to do with the kids that are here in better training. Thank you.
What, what is in that, then?
So it's the...
I mean, specifics.
Yes, so if you do that, if you look at this, most of that is accounted for within this slide right here. A hundred and forty-three students that...
That's under eleven hundred.
That we needed to attack.
Yes.
Yes. And again, the only part of this that we can't account for or address really is those adjudicated students, those three students who are court adjudicated to a placement.
So the, because there's an increase, that's why the cost goes up two hundred thousand?
Yes.
So, if I look at, like, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and do the, like, fifteen thousand for the ninety-eight and forty thousand to the forty-five, I get, like, three million, over three million that it cost us last year.
For which?
For the eleven hundred. So it looks like, out of the, even if we just look at the top line, like, so the ones attending charter schools, a hundred and forty-three, ninety-eight of them were cyber, fifteen thousand each is one point four seven million, which leaves forty-five a brick and mortar, which is forty thousand each, which is one point eight. So we're over three million already, just that first one.
But how do we know that, that, how do you get that some of them are forty thousand?
So we don't know in twenty-five, twenty-six, how many kids will remain either a side program or a brick and mortar charter. That's an estimate.
All the costs that goes to them is in there. So fifteen thousand per student, I think that's what you're saying, was you have...
That's just the regular ed kids.
It was the special ed.
Special ed kids are done.
In the twelve hundred series. Remember, eleven hundred is regular ed, twelve hundred is special ed.
So they're not the hundred and forty-three?
Yes, but there, those a hundred and forty-three are at two thousand.
They're, you know, just regular.
Even that is like two point four million. I'm just, I feel like it's cost us more than it looks like.
No, no, it wasn't.
Okay.
Just under two million, which is enough.
Yes, well, you're the real numbers, so, yeah.
So now, if you look at, as I started, the eleven, twelve hundred series accounts for an abundance of what is, is associated with it.
So it costs us eight million dollars for the special?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, yes, for the charter, I know, for all of our special ed.
Does that include the IU?
The twelve hundred series is not just those costs associated with education. There's other costs. BCIU fair share, early intervention.
So all the IU costs, or?
All the IU costs incorporated within this twelve-hundred series.
And then everything you do here too.
Have nothing to do with what we provide here, this is nothing, I mean, that's additional.
Wait, wait, so the.
So this incorporates also the Lakeside counselors, which is a little over a half million dollars.
But none of the special ed classrooms in the district is not in there?
Yeah, some materials, classroom materials, and that slide, if you look at the slide before, it just shows you what's connected to that. Hence the nine million dollar, nine point three million dollars cost. So those students that will be attending out-of-district placements and attending the BUCIU, that's incorporated in that nine point three million dollars, but not only that. There's other costs associated with special ed under this twelve-hundred series. No change here, again, homebound travel. Again, now you'll start to see the decrease in the amount that we pay within these different budget series.
So question, I'm sorry, going back to the twelve-hundred.
Yeah.
It's including when you have like gifted support, learning support, the emotional, that's all here?
All here, yes.
Okay, got it, so any type of learning.
BUCIU.
All that additional, right.
But it also incorporates what we do here.
What we do here for our kids, which is, okay, got it, thank you.
Does it include the special education teachers, or is that, that's all?
No, not personnel, that's, that would be under personnel tariff budget in each year.
Thank you.
So this is the fourteen-hundred series. Now, curiously enough, you see that cost for twenty-four, twenty-five. The change here really is we have a student connected to the Chester County IU, and that student is no longer here.
And that's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per student.
Was that was for one student? So we're all working.
Why, why would?
To relate the services.
Would the BUCS gang do that, or BUCS IU?
No, no, because of where the student was located and the needs for that student. That student is actually Chester County IU. And now no longer a part of Penridge, so that's the reason for the change of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Which is great for us.
But that number could change if you had it on the student that came in and had the same needs.
Correct.
All right, just everyone's aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And again, this is not about personnel. These are just costs associated with these different positions. So if you look at this twenty-one-hundred series, part of this is, the change is new testing materials and software that we're required to have, as well as iPads. The iPads are not for the psychologists, they're for the teachers to work with kids when they do reevaluation reports. It's also a change to the testing requirement, which actually began in February of twenty-twenty-five, but we have until next school year to implement it. So we waited as long as we could in order to buy these, these iPads, twenty-four of them, at a cost of eight thousand dollars. And the new testing materials and software costs is a little over twelve thousand dollars.
Where's the rest of it?
Training.
Forty-six? Is this a one-time thing then, and then just go back down?
This is a one-time thing. Well, one time for now, seven, eight years, there could be changes in testing protocol that requires us to do the same thing.
So this is basically a requirement from the government?
Yes.
Without funding?
It's mandated, right?
I did, sorry.
Manded, it's mandated, right?
Unfunded.
These are legal fees.
Who's, what legal fee is that? Who, who's Sweet Haven Service?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now you look at this, if you compare twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, there was a change, and the change, correct me if I'm wrong Sean, is for contracted services for OT and PT. That would not have part of this series, it was a part of the twelve-hundred series. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five, it changed to the twenty-four-hundred series.
Figure that, why, why forty-three thousand dollar increase?
So the forty-three thousand dollar increase, nursing went over budget by twenty thousand dollars this current year, so we need to do that to this year. And also, we're in the second year of a two-year cycle of replacing, I believe it's twenty AEDs, which I think is money that would be well spent.
Are they expired or? Why were we so far over on, on nursing number? We added or just?
We did add the, we had the, part of the AEDs, half of the AEDs this year, half of them for, for next year.
No, and I thought the, so there was a nursing over?
We were over twenty thousand dollars over budget. And a part of that was.
Was the ID comes in that, oh, it wasn't like a nursing.
And software, and you'll see that in a, in a future slide as well. So this is just a different look at all the information we've just looked at and reviewed. So you can see from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the projection for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is just a different look, and so you can see each budget series, the costs associated with that series, where we were in twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two compared to where we are now, and the variance from the prior school year to the current school year. So it's just a different look at all of the information we just reviewed.
Mainly with special education, I would say, the big driver?
Yes, absolutely. So what I call budget challenges and budget pressures, this again is just to review where we are, where the increases are, and give you a synthesized version of what we've just reviewed. Again, just a different look, so it's very, very clear in terms of what's accounted for this particular budget.
Can I jump in, Chris?
Yeah.
Um, I think it's important to talk about this with, with charter school tuition rates, is that they automatically increase every year based on the growth of the school district's budget. There's a formula, mandated formula in the charter school law that we have to follow. There's a, there's a form put out by PDE, Dan does the calculations every year. It basically, as our budget goes up, we have to pay the charter schools more. So we can maintain the same level of kids, kids at charter schools, but our costs will go up. Because our costs go up, and our costs are driven by mandated costs, like Peasars and special ed, every, you know, all these other things. And so it just, it's an automatic increase every year that goes out the door to the charter schools. And when you talk about kids at charter schools, and to me, I look at it, it's a form of school choice at the cost of the local taxpayer payer. When people pay their school taxes, they assume their school taxes are going to benefit the schools that are in Penridge School District. But that's not a hundred percent true. The state has a system where there is school choice, where the local taxpayers' dollars go to other schools, basically by force. Because if we don't pay the bill, the, the state takes the money from us.
And that's, could be anywhere, that, that school could not be in our district or in our county.
Absolutely, and all those, all those cyber charter schools are outside.
All over the state.
Maybe I'm jumping the gun, jumping a little bit ahead, because I know I saw this in one of the further presentations, but does the, the federal money that we receive has no impact on the cost per student? Correct, it's not calculated in the allocation of the per student cost? And this is how it was explained to me, so I'm trying to follow up, that the money that we receive federally doesn't count towards that money, so with all the uncertainty towards.
I'm not following your, I'm not following you, Chris, I'm sorry.
So we rece, we receive, what, say five million dollars in the federal money?
Yeah.
And that's broken out to the per student allocation, like, it doesn't count towards what the per student allocation is? Or cost, like, because it, it reduces that.
So, so federal dollars are driven out based on, of their own formula, under the, under the federal, federal laws. Doesn't necessarily interact with the state formulas that drive out basic education, special education funding. But as we look at total expenditures, like, if we wanted, if we were going to just develop like cost per student or amount paid per student, we would, we would add in all those expenses, even the, even the federal expenditures.
Because of the way that it was explained, I had heard it, was that, I guess, per, I don't know if it's like PDE's funding formula, because it wasn't, that that money's not included towards per student.
Correct, they're, they're separate funding formulas.
So if we, with the uncertainty, and just for what it is, if for some reason that money disappeared, that would actually have a twofold effect, that, that would derive up the cost of a per student cost, but then all the charter schools wouldn't reap that reward, because that cost would be higher. So not only would we be losing a funding stream, but we're also paying each student to go to charter school. Go ahead.
If I'm following, so as far as the expenditures that lead to the federal funding, there are deductions on the PA three sixty-three, which is the charter school funding. Those deductions would go away, and if you still maintain those expenditures at a local level, so if the district was still funding those expenditures, that would factor into the total expenditures that get anchored into the charter school tuition, and we would lose out on the, on the deduction for the federal funding, so you're right, essentially.
We're getting hit twice.
The district's expenses would still be maintained, but you'd have to fund it at a local level.
Correct.
At a federal level. And we'd lose out on the deduction from the charter school calculation, and so it kind of stayed.
So we'd lose a funding stream, or a revenue stream, and have to pay more money, because the funding formula would go up, so all, that hundred and forty-three students that were, for the eleven-hundred would be increased on cost. So we'd end up getting hit twice for.
Correct.
Depending on how it would happen.
Yes, and the loss of the federal funding would not have any impact as far as an increase in basic ed funding. So it's not like, it's, it's not like the federal, the state funding formula is going to swoop in and make up that loss.
Yeah, we'd have to find, find that revenue to keep it.
Yeah, and what, what, basically what Dan's saying is if you, if the district chooses to maintain those expenditures and pay the, pay for them with local money, then yes, then you're going to get double whammy, because you're going to lose the deduction for, for the federal funding.
Correct.
So the way not to have to, the way not to pay charter schools more money in this scenario is to eliminate those services for the kids that are here.
All right.
Very good question, I, I'm glad we talked through that, because I was, I was missing that point, thank you, Dan.
Why are charter schools reimbursed when other private schools are not?
Because they're not, they're not private schools, they are public schools.
They are public, public schools.
They're privately.
Privately owned for private.
They can be, they can be privately owned.
Posthumous.
Yes.
Mostly a bonus.
So how are they considered public as schools?
They're not subject for public reporting.
Yeah.
So we don't know how much money they're making, and we need to reform it, and we're, other schools are losing.
That, that just drives the issue that Angelo brought up before. We've got to beef up our cyber school, we've got to make sure that becomes the number one cyber school associated with our students. Yeah, it's, I don't think you have any other choice but to do that.
One of the largest cyber schools acquiring a bunch of real estate, which kind of begs the question, why are they doing that?
Because their board wants them to.
Equality, to do something with their money.
Consider for profit.
And we have to be public about everything, so it's a huge difference. So talk to your congressman and your table presenter and let them know, because this needs to change.
And I think we also, to Angelo's point, need to make our brick and mortar school more attractive.
Yes, that's a hundred percent.
Identify those reasons that contributed to them to leaving us in the first place, which requires time, which requires time and dedicated effort on our part to have conversations with parents, to necessarily entice them to bring their children back, but to help them understand that we provide an excellent education, and there are services that we have here, counselors, social workers, and other individuals who are, their positions are designed to support kids, so even though they may have had a bad experience, let's look at how we can bring those kids back and eliminate this cost increase.
And possibly even bringing families, I mean, we just had something here at the high school, and there was a family here that wasn't coming to Penridge and decided, I'm going to try a public school, and she loved it, and I could see they get her name sheet, she says her girls go here, and she's very, very happy. So even that, even having a family come and say, we made this change, you know, that speaks volumes too.
There was talk a few years back about creating like a space for students who are struggling with like the mental health aspects of being in the school, and I'm not going to describe it well, but it was, so where we had a space where there were some counselors, and they'd do a class, and if they wanted to do the rest of the day online, they could sit and do the rest of the day online, like. I feel like that kind of died on the vine, but.
With you.
I don't know if that would be a in-house expense that would save us from paying so much for things like Lakeside and things like that, like if we offered that service. From what I understand, the space is still there, but it was mostly for the high school, but I don't know.
Empty space is always useful.
Yeah, well, yeah, it might be filled with stuff now, but like, I think, it's a good deal, yeah.
So this next slide again, about budget challenges, budget pressures, this again explains kind of that, you know, million dollar increase from last school year to this school year. Again, just trying to codify information so we see exactly where this money is going. Let's explain what we talked about a little bit before with the site testing materials, the training, purchasing the iPads, which is really for student use, where those iPads are going, the testing software, assuming the cost of the training, professional development for the staff, special ed staff. This accounts for that twenty-four-hundred series, increasing the nursing budget to cover the helping to software that's contracted, and then updated over the previous years. Increased cost of supplement, comp, funds and tuition, you can look at twenty-four, twenty-five, you compare that to twenty-five, twenty-six.
So is that an estimate, or are these, these are done deals?
These are done deals. And we, this is what's happened right now as, like I last looked at this, with the team.
So these are money we have to spend tuition for next year?
Yes, correct.
Is that because of something we did wrong, or just something that's agreed?
Partly, partly things that we did wrong when we had exposure, and then settlements negotiated between the attorney for the family and, and our attorneys. This gives you a comparison of general supplies, again, that increase, part of that increase includes those testing materials that were a few slides ago. This is a breakdown of everything that we've just talked about over the last four to five slides. And these particular areas account for the seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollar increase.
Those are all the increases?
Those are what the majority of the increases account for. So I tried to synthesize and break it down so you could see what impact this budget could go up ten percent for this, from last year to this year.
These are just the part of the increase?
Part of the increase, yeah.
Okay.
And that's it?
Okay, questions? We already had a lot of questions. Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is program improvement and assistant superintendents. Will this be your last presentation to the board? For?
This, yeah, for.
For this one? Yes. Yes, alright.
Alright, so the evening everyone, I'm actually going to be talking about cyber school as well. So my budget is much simpler than what you know it all, I have program improvement, and to remind everybody what that is, you'll see actually a decrease in that by about nine thousand dollars, the sheer program improvement is what we do to improve programming. And to remind everybody what we presented at the curriculum committee this year, we have in mathematics, AP precap, in oral language, AP Latin. We have two new courses in STEM, advanced STEM lab with product design and development, and then STEM four, manufacturing and product entrepreneurship. We also will have in honors, advanced computer design and animation in our art program. And in our pathways, we introduce education career pathway, it's academy. And then in special education, uh we have unified art, unified music, and in wellness, we have middle school wellness seven with the CPR training kits. That's what we presented all year, we will have no other program improvements this year, so that's the total budget this year. We have an increase in um our O, excuse me, our O three O budget, and that really is, and I I'm glad I'm gonna have an opportunity to talk about this. The greatest increase in my budget isn't anything new in this curriculum office, it's actually the Penridge cyber program of which I used to budget for general ed students, and then the special education students were funded through the special education budget, but this year it's all combined. So the reason why my budget is increased is really due to that, so that had a major impact on it. But because all those questions were asked when Ernest was giving his presentation, when we first started Penridge Cyber, our budget was seventy-five thousand dollars, I remember the first budget. And we were really excited and we created this program and we started getting students to come back. Prior to COVID hitting, uh Mrs. Garrish and I held these, held these events. We would call parents and they would come to the cyber access room at the high, at the high school, and we built that for kids. We invited them in, we showed them everything they could have, and what we really did was we built it. You could have a Penridge diploma, you had Penridge services, you could take all classes or some classes. You could come to the high school and, you know, if you weren't ready to be in a classroom, you could take your cyber courses in a class i- in the cyber access room. All of those things are still available to kids. I did the applications and I, in January, I got the new applications for cyber, there isn't one that isn't related to mental health. There isn't one at the secondary level. But to give you perspective, we only have one fifth grader, so one elementary student, one seventh grader, and two eighth graders. So it really does not become a huge factor until it's high school. So currently, we have six ninth graders, there are twenty-two tenth graders, thirty-seven eleventh graders, and twenty-nine twelfth graders. And within the mix of all those students, there's a combination of students who have one cyber class and they're in school for the rest of the day, there's some with two. And then there are some who have all cyber. But the advantage is they're connected to the school, which is really one of the factors why we built that program. Because we really didn't wanna lose any more students. The cyber programs were already out there before public schools had their own, so there are all those students out there. We built this twofold to make sure that we didn't lose more and to try to bring other students back. So the students that we have in there, the nineteen students, we still have, even though we're, we budgeted about three hundred thousand dollars for the year for all general ed and special education students to keep them with Penridge. But I fully support the idea that we start holding those events again. Start calling the parents and bringing them back and showing them the advantages of being connected to Penridge, to Penridge staff. We also have, I think it's four, there may be five, we have cyber opportunities in our general ed high school curriculum, so you could take, and this really helps a lot of our students go to the technical school too. You could be in an English class or a social studies class and be taking that as a cyber option. So you, it's still Penridge class, doesn't cost us anything, and we service you that way. So it is good, it is strong, it's well-run, and we just need to have greater efforts in bringing students back. And to be honest, we have conversation after conversation when parents come, students, they have to write applications, and we try to help them to see other ways of staying in school. And sometimes we can do that, and sometimes it's, yes, of course, we'll provide you the service through Penridge. If you don't provide the service through Penridge, the students are gonna go to a cyber charter school. Besides which, we're proud of what we've created here, we just need to make sure that people in this community understand that we have that and bring that kids back, so that really is variance of the curriculum budget this year. There are no new programs, there's nothing else new in the curriculum budget. It's really just one budget for all students attending Penridge Cyber, that's, that's the variation there.
Oh, have we ever heard or do we know, because I know, I think there's ninety-eight students that attend our cyber school and a hundred and forty-three that attend charter. Do, have we ever heard from the parents to say, why, why are you choosing a charter as a cyber as opposed to Penridge Cyber? If we're offering, if they're able to come to our school, if they're able to play sports on our teams, have we ever heard from them or gotten feedback to say, why are you choosing this as opposed to this?
So for the people that we met, right, they started there, we didn't have a char, a cyber program, so that was the option that they opted for. Some of those parents, when they heard they could have the best of both worlds for their students, they brought them back. Other families really just prefer not to be connected and they stay. But there's not like a particular reason like, this is better academics, but it isn't, it isn't about that. It is more so that that is something that they already started, that's what you will find when you look at the outside cyber program. Because we should, I don't know the number, I don't, I don't know the number in Ernest's budget of any student who left and went to a cyber charter this year as opposed to attending our cyber program. Because everyone is on that, in the buildings, from the principals to the guidance counselors who bring the kids in and talk to them about it, so we really want them connected. So I think that if you start bringing families back in and share that kind of information and show everything we have, start bringing that in. Because I remember that year right before COVID, we saved the district well over a million dollars that year of bringing kids back. But unfortunately, went the other way.
Do, so it's our curriculum that is set up to be online, that they're learning the same things they would learn if they were in classrooms.
So there's two ways this happens, one is through Imagine Learning, there, there are courses, that's what we're paying for, that's why you see that budget. The courses that we started, that is our curriculum with our teachers, right, for the courses here. Well, we're going to continue to start um increasing the number of courses we offer that way. But you see in the budget is really for Imagine Learning, there are so many different courses that high school students need, right, to graduate. So we do not have the ability to offer all of that. So we offer what we can, and then we purchase from Imagine Learning for the rest of those students.
And is that like a per student fee, like so if we, if we did bring more in, this could go up, but it's still less expensive than what we're paying for them?
Far less expensive, and they can be reused.
Do these private cybers use Imagine Learning too, or do they drill up their own? So we're basically offering the same, I think we need to point that out to them.
Yes.
You're getting the same, they're paying somebody, we're paying to market on top of that.
Right. That's exactly right.
That's part of them, we are, we need, we are being out marketed, I think, by these, by these, they're going out, I'm sure they have a much bigger presence. But they're getting the same product.
It is the same product, and that's what we're trying to claim to them, it's the same one.
And we have so much more to offer.
They're mine.
We have so much more to offer.
We have so much to offer, it's right, and our seats are reusable, so if you have a seat and you have a history of students doesn't need anyone, we can add another student to it, so, you know, we're, we have a good relationship with them. But yeah, there's work to be done, but please know that the cyber program at Penridge is really stellar. And Karen Fair is our coordinator, she's a teacher, she was a social studies teacher here, and she spends so much time with students and helps them through the courses and calls parents and keeps the connection going. So I think the more we do that, the more we market, um, if some of those kids back, and that's a different story to tell.
How big is this cyber access room right now? For the students who are.
Just a classroom.
Just a classroom.
It used to be right across from the library, but it's moved now. So students, you know, sometimes kids, uh students come in and they take one class there, sometimes they can take two. Sometimes they have a late arrival and they'll come in, they'll take their chemistry course and then they'll go to another course, so it's pretty flexible.
Do we think that um Ms. Fair is at capacity right now too, that if we brought more and we might need more help coordinating?
That would be a great thing to happen.
Yeah.
If we needed more of Karen Fair, the numbers that um Mr. Ernest is talking about would decrease significantly. The cost to keep kids here is significantly lower than a private, public charter cyber school. But yeah, I mean, I hope that's a problem one day, that you have to increase our, our cyber coordinator work.
So is what she's doing, sorry, did you hear your hand?
No, no, no.
Is what she's doing like helping to ensure the students are completing their work too, like all that?
Oh, yeah, she's great, she calls the student, she sits with the student, she'll go down to the middle school and work with the student. We don't have a lot of students under the high school, but she'll even do that, she calls the parents, she works directly with the kids, she'll give them academic support, she works really hard, she's doing a wonderful job. And satisfaction rate among the students who are in the program is high. So it's just a matter of bringing students back.
And I'm sorry, there are students who do it from home completely, or do they still, okay.
And we have success stories of students who come back, who did it for a year or did it for a couple of months, and some of them figure it didn't work out the way they thought it would, and we bring them back. Really, our goal's always to bring them back, but we have a level of understanding that this is an option that works best for some of the students, and we're here to provide it.
So again, trying to think of every, because if we're bringing students back from some of the private cyber charter schools, would there be, because I'm assuming their syllabus or anything is not lining up with ours? And so that would be part of it too, is just kind of figuring out how to fit the coursework in, especially if they're mostly secondary ed, secondary ed. How to fit coursework in, like if their math progression is different than what we usually do, we would be working with them to.
Well, I mean, they definitely have market, they're going as close to the public schools.
Yeah, true, yeah.
And sometimes it's not the exact course, but it's a comparable course.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they have a lot of options, but we're using the same program.
Can kids do dual enrollment cyber also, like if they're senior here and they're in our cyber program and they're at the point where they're saying, like, I could do a Bucks County Community College class online, like, do we allow that?
Yes.
Okay.
It depends, right?
Yeah.
I mean, the answer is most likely that can happen, as long as it is a course not offered here, right? And we've seen that happen for sure. We want to meet the needs of students, we're doing everything we can to meet the needs of students, and this is just another option. As in our dual enrollment, the enrollment courses like you suggest.
So just, I just wanna clarify, so if the students in a cyber are in charter school and they come back to Penridge, there's not like, um, there's not a big educational gap, we're not trying to like bring that, we don't have to like fight to bring them back up to where they should be? Or is that another issue that we would have to account for, um, like they're behind educationally?
Typically, we're talking about high school students and we wait till the end of semester, right? We don't wanna bring kids back halfway through because it doesn't always match up, then we would be dealing with that.
But I mean that they wouldn't be like, I don't know how to say, like, um, they're going into tenth grade, but they're really like, their curriculum with the charter school was progressing at a ninth grade level, like they're not, there's not that discrepancy that we'd have to like try to do extra to bring them back up?
But they're typically taking, right, the same courses we would be offering, they're, they're, they're comparable, that doesn't typically happen.
Gotcha, because I know that the teachers are unaccredited, like they're not accredited teachers, so I didn't know if like, there was like a teaching gap to get them back to where they should be with, if they came back to Penridge.
Yeah, we really have, and like I said, I think because this really doesn't affect elementary and middle too much, it's a lot of your juniors and seniors, this really, there's some, the numbers are pretty small, at ninth grade, a little bit higher, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grader, I get most of my applications in January, after the first block came through.
Gotcha.
Alright, let's keep going.
And that is my budget, that's the increase. So program improvement is down slightly by about nine thousand dollars. That perhaps run the gamble from anywhere from two hundred thousand dollars to a half a million dollars, it just depends on programming. This year, we're just down um slightly. The increase in the budget is really due to the combination of general and special education cyber students.
And that came out of whose budget?
Uh, special education, they would pay for special ed island, I think for general ed. Now we combined it all in my budget.
So you lost that from your budget, that cost?
Yes.
So your increase is more that's taking that and then adding, so it's a bigger increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, you have a short presentation for us, sir?
Here. Hey, I just got through this, just in case, alright.
Yeah.
I'll read. My budget is going down, unlike this.
Yeah, you're done.
Um, last year was one seventy-five, one fifty-eight, that was an increase of twenty-four dollars from the previous year. It's gonna be one fifty-one, three hundred, which is a decrease of thirteen point six percent. The budget in my office comes from a number of different accounts and functions, you'll see primarily it comes from professional development, and that is professional development of certified employees, professional development of non-certified employees. There's a variety of different locations where that comes from, it also pays within mileage for uh technical supplies, things like that. The main drivers, PA ETAP, we pay that in this current year, but it's not due for renewal until twenty-six, twenty-seven. I think that's something I think we can look at in terms of, you know, if there are other options for us to look at the evaluation systems of our professional staff. We did have an increase in our Raptor services and supplies that's coming out of the facilities budget going into my budget, so that has definitely increased. We're not redoing Screencastify, which was part of my budget, now moving to Kathy's. So Dr. Shite, that, that's not being moved at all, I hope. We did have an increase in dues and fees for a few of our organizations in this past year, and we also had an increase in trainings, particularly at our Lincoln Trainings, we're really focusing on that for our teachers and for our. And we also had an increase in trainings, particularly at our Lincoln Trainings. We're really focusing on that for our teachers and for our ministry. But overall, it's a 13.6% increase and we have to keep going in that direction. Questions?
Sorry, I forgot about you. You were locked into one.
I'm very forgetful.
It wasn't a large.
Shaun's will be the most fascinating.
Yes. Does anybody need a break?
Do you want to take a minute break?
Still powered through.
Keep rolling. Two, three minutes?
Yes, I powered through.
I said powered through.
Okay.
I think we've been getting up what we need to anyway.
Stretch break.
No. Well, that's gonna take a few minutes to get the screen going.
There are so many slides.
Yeah, it's over there.
Is his presentation melting the server? Does anybody want to order theirs?
It's gonna take a while.
Those projects have already been identified and approved and they're being planned and they will kick off as soon as the school year ends. Some of those uh costs will actually fall into the current twenty four, twenty five year. And the rest, anything done after July or July first or after will fall into twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. So, moving forward then, uh we would guess that we would have about thirteen, roughly thirteen, fourteen million dollars available at the end of the next fiscal year, as long as those transfers remain, as long as the six point one million dollar transfer remains for the uh general fund and the general fund has surplus.
Well, but that keeps growing, right, for capital projects? Based on your projections, it could be thirty three million in twenty, but we don't.
Well, that's assuming that we do the three million dollars.
That's true, but we don't, we don't know until I C S comes back.
Correct, correct.
For those numbers, but.
The three million dollars is the plug number, i- i- it's most likely, we've seen costs, you know, the way the costs have run over the last few years.
But it's still, even if it was six million, it'd still be growing substantially every year, right?
Well, if it's about, if we do about six million and the transfer over is about six million, you're gonna break about even, uh that's and and then hopefully you have a little bit of surplus at the general fund at the end.
Assuming a surplus.
General fund.
So you have eight million going over every year, about.
Six of that is known.
Yeah, the surplus is the gap.
Yeah, you have to get.
So it's at least six million.
Yes.
So we would have a better idea of what's gonna happen when we get the long-term capital plan.
Absolutely, then then what we can do is we can sit with I C S and we can determine, I mean, we know we have six million coming over. Uh, we know, we know we have that much. And when we can sit and we can plan for that, that type of an expenditure each year and then maintain that. As long as we're able to maintain that transfer from the, you know, transfer over.
We will maintain it, I mean, it's up to us, right?
Yes, it's up to, yes, absolutely.
But if we're not, if we come out in twenty twenty six, say we think we only need three million that year. You don't need to continue that, you could use some of that as a part of the operating budget, right? I mean, we don't wanna not do capital projects, cause we know we're gonna pay for it longer, but if we're accumulating, cause that six million is really, it's not dedicated to capital project, it's money we save from the refund, uh redoing the bonds, right? So, why shouldn't some of that be used if we're not gonna spend it on capital projects?
The six billion dollars is the, is the, is the reduction in debt, in the debt service.
Right, right, we used to spend that on interest and principal, right?
Yes.
So we're not spending that on that.
Not spending on interest and principal. So the theory was that in order to maintain that money for capital projects and to better the district's facilities, for the mortar, plus fields, so forth, that we would take that money and since we're not using it for debt service anymore, we use it for capital projects there. Because when you use it for debt service, what you were doing is you were using that money to pay for capital projects that were done in the past, borrowed money, paid for those capital projects. The theory is to take that money, move it over to capital projects, but do capital projects without having to borrow and pay interest costs.
But the last two years, we spent three point six and two point five. Right. And I know before that we did a lot of repayments.
Last year, we spent, actually, we spent over eight million dollars last year. Part of that went to the previous year, three point six million, goes to this year. The year before that, we spent eight to ten million dollars in capital projects. This summer of twenty twenty five is the lowest year that we, that we've had, because we knew we were going through the process with I C S. We picked a few projects that we knew we needed to do that could be done um relatively easily locally without a lot of influence or planning from an outside agency, and that's how we came up with two point five.
And one project was a carryover from last year, the bus garage.
Yep.
So the three million going forward isn't a realistic prediction?
No, absolutely.
Or that we shouldn't plug it in like that?
No, that's, that's not a realistic number. It will, will know.
I know, but we should use an average based on the last five years or something.
Yeah, probably should be somewhere seven, eight, nine is what that number should be.
That would reflect a more accurate picture of what the, cause otherwise people will look at that and say you're building up three thirty three million in excess capital.
Yeah, right, right. We need to, we need to get our plan from I C S and then we need to, we need to finish this document once we have our plan and and we, but we can use this, you know, as, as a way to help us build that plan with I C S.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, the next thing I want to talk about is debt service. The first part uh on the left is the current year, twenty four, twenty five. Um, so the debt service, uh it's about six and a half million. Uh, the debt service will remain at about six and a half million for the, the next two fiscal years. And then it will drop about roughly a million and a half uh for fiscal year twenty eight. Drop roughly another million and a half, give or take a little bit fiscal year twenty nine. And then the remaining three million goes away uh that next fiscal year. So, um, this is the debt after we did two major things in the district in twenty twenty. We, we did forty four million dollars in refinancing, which saved just under two million dollars in interest costs. Uh, and then in twenty twenty two, we did another eight point three million dollars of debt refinancing. And we restructured that debt and we cut off fifteen years of payments. Uh, and we saved over three point two million dollars in interest costs by doing two things. Refinancing for lower interest rates and rest, re uh reestablishing the debt sched, debt payment schedule uh to save three point two million. So the outstanding principal at the beginning of twenty five, twenty six year will be just under twenty million, so nineteen and a half. Uh, and back in fifteen, sixteen, when I came to the district, we were carrying a hundred and twenty two million dollars of debt. So over the last ten years, we've, we've shaved off over a hundred million dollars of, of principal um in the district.
Amazing accomplishment.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause that all money, that six million is based on your department and the school refinancing that, which gives us an extra six million to spend every year. So it's, it's huge really, when you think about the size of the budget.
Appreciate it. Uh, so this is a new, a new look, a new slide, we haven't done this before. When we went back and we, uh, we talked to all of our colleagues in Bucks County, except for Chu, who um chose not to participate. Uh, and we asked them, and we, we told them where we were at in March, where we were at when we, we started our budget. Um, with before any tax increase, where, where are you at, what's your deficit? Uh, and people at districts that got back to us, um, you're gonna see some pretty, pretty staggering numbers there in the, the third column over. That's the deficit, the budget deficit. Uh, and then we have a percentage of the deficit in comparison to their overall budget. Um, so in March, when we presented a five point seven million dollar deficit, we were about three and a half percent of our expenditure. All the rest of our colleagues, except for Chris Burrow, who had a balanced budget in March, um, have, you know, a, a, a budget deficit that's higher than, than our deficit. Some of them are, are kind of alarming. So, you know, we're not as bad off as some of our neighbors. Uh, but certainly, you know, when we, when we left our meeting in March, we knew we had a lot of work to do. Um, which we've, we've done, we've done a lot. Um, and, and we're, you know, we, we shaved off a few million dollars of that deficit, but it's just, um, it's kind of staggering um to look and see really, you know, things that we've talked about, about mandated costs going up, um, local revenues decreasing very little and no state revenue to support this year. It's not only hitting us, it's hitting everybody else in Bucks County. We are not alone. This is, remember I talked to you last month about our state funding, our, uh, all of our state funding, when you added it all together for next year, our increase is an increase of twenty five thousand dollars, which I'm absolutely appalled by. Fact that that's all the more that, that state of Pennsylvania is gonna give us next year. But look at some of our neighbors, some of our neighbors are actually losing money next year.
Based on the need, is that what?
Based on uh the uh basic funding formulas, the special aid funding formula, that, that adequacy funding formula, the tax uh equivalency funding formula, and the loss of the charter school money. The loss of the charter school money to us was two hundred thousand dollars. Um, the governor put charter school, uh, charter school reimbursement funding in la, in the last year's budget, which is current year, we're in it now, and then next year wiped it out. Why? I don't know, other than there is talk of the reduction in charter school rate. But that hasn't happened yet, and we've heard that discussion in Harrisburg every year, over and over and over again, but it never makes it across. But what they've done is they've wiped out the funding and they've kind of let us hang here, so we'll see what happens. I hope, I hope this is the year that the charter school funding changes, um, and we see some relief there. But the two districts that are receiving a lot of money, Ben San and Burstville, is from the adequacy formula. And the adequacy formula is coming from the um, the, the, the state lawsuit.
That's the fair funding.
The fair funding lawsuit, thank you, the fair funding lawsuit. Um, and the adequacy formula is a catch-up for those districts. Uh, we receive about eighty nine thousand dollars in ad, adequacy funding. Uh, but, but really, the, the scary part for adequacy to, to, to us is we receive a minimal amount of eighty nine thousand, but by receiving that money, that we lose our ability to um apply for any exceptions to the Act One Index, because we receive adequacy funding. And we, we receive such a small amount that it's, it's, it's kind of.
What would an exception be with what would?
So, the only thing that's really left at this point for exceptions are a large increase in, in teachers' costs and special education, if you had a large increase in special education, um, that, those are really the only two that you can um apply for anymore.
What's the total state funding, twenty five, is that a two percent, five percent of the total funding in general?
Our twenty five, the twenty five thousand?
Yeah, what is, I mean.
Probably less than a percent of what we receive.
Not keeping up with inflation.
Oh, my, no. Next slide, um, I took this right out of the P S B A uh document that we all received. Uh, it's the twenty twenty five state education that P S B A put out this month. Um, really what this, what this slide is, is showing us, uh, those first three line items are mandated costs uh in the state of Pennsylvania. So from nine, ten through twenty two, twenty three, pension costs rose seven hundred fifty five percent on school districts. Charter school tuition rose over two hundred twenty six percent. And special education costs rose over forty eight percent for public school districts. Again, all these are, they're all mandated costs. No way around them, you have to do them unless it's a school district. Things that districts can control, like salaries, are up about sixteen percent, all other expenditures, twenty nine percent. And you, you compare them to the U S inflation rate of forty one percent, the things that school districts can control, school districts have been controlling them. They, they can't control salaries, they can't control all other expenditures, other than the mandated ones. And, and they've, we've been doing a pretty good job, but it's the mandated costs that are just, what is absolutely killing us. This is, this is a great slide from the P S B A. The next one I wanna look at there to show you, and this is a new one, and we, we just actually worked on this this morning, Brad Angelo and I. We looked at contract settlements uh for our two biggest groups, Hespa in the red, P E A, or, which is our teachers, in the blue. Um, and we looked at the last two contracts for each. Uh, you can see the blue line, the settlements, the increase, so, so the, 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 the million dollars there is the cost and salary of the increase uh in the first year. So nineteen twenty caught the teacher's, the teacher's contract increase and salary was a million eighty one thou, eighty one thousand. Better going to a million one, so roughly stayed about a nine dollars. In twenty four, twenty five, that's the, the most recent contract settled for the teacher, that annual increase jumped from about a nine dollars to about two point six million dollars. And then came back down to about a million, over a million six.
For now.
A million four, a million three, a million five. So, the first contract was about a two and a half percent average. Um, and when the second contract settled, the two point six million dollars was almost a seven percent average, seven percent increase. And then instead of coming back to two and a halves, we're now running three and a halves for our increases uh in the teacher's salaries.
So for this year, it's an extra one point six million?
Yes.
From the new contract that went into this fiscal, which we didn't budget for, right, not, not all of that.
The one that you, that really hit was, yes, current year, twenty four, twenty five. It was two point six and the nine hundred thousand hit.
Yes.
We didn't have those budgeted, we had two and a half percent budgeted.
So is it safe to say if you were to combine the two, Pespa and P E A, cause we would have been paying for P E A over a million, so that goes up, the net increase here is about two million compared to twenty three, twenty four. So that's one of the reasons we're struggling to have a balanced budget. There's a two million dollar, and I'm not knocking that expenditure, because it was a negotiated contract, and certainly we're going to honor, but that, the reality, the real facts are, there's a two million dollar increase. And if you look at the growth of the blue, um, the P E A that right there, it's substantially higher. It's a sustained cost, and it would be interesting to see what that sustained cost will be over time.
But it was going down before that, though, like we were.
Correct.
Even with this, they aren't even making up for inflation, you know?
Correct.
I understand that it is, but I feel like.
What's another reflection of inflation, vicious, how much?
No, but it doesn't sound like.
No, it, it gives you how much more extra you're paying every year.
Right.
If it.
It's just inflation.
What's that? No, it depends on what your base is and, and what your, what people are earning at that point.
Right.
It's not just a.
So our.
Yeah, this is just the increase, right?
Everyone's getting more money every year.
Right, I understand.
So our, our annual cost for, for teachers have, you know, went up by fifty percent and, and the increase is staying there.
Yes.
And, and for the Pespa, it's, it's roughly thirty, forty percent.
But we all agree this is the right thing to do for the school, it's just now we're paying for it more.
Right, right.
And we have to realize that if we're doing the budget.
Absolutely, absolutely.
No qualms about doing that, but now.
Yes, absolutely, agree with the hundred percent. We all, we all agree, including your business administrator, that it's the right thing to do at the time.
Yeah.
But what we're doing now is we're just showing you the impact of these numbers.
Which is.
Yep.
I guess my point is, is like, we could keep delaying that, though. Like, that had to happen, right?
Yes, absolutely. And this is another way to look at it. Um, this is the cumulative cost over time of those contracts. Um, when you get to twenty eight, twenty nine, the cumulative cost of the teacher's contract is fourteen million dollars. And then Pespa contract was, I mean, three and a half million dollars.
I guess the reason we talked about this was, this was the right thing to do, but now this board has to deal with the impact of it more than the old board.
That's right.
And I think that's important to realize, because even though we agreed with it, it's now time to make sure that we can fund it correctly. But that.
This is a um spreadsheet that um one of Louisiana's employees, uh, Faith Gonnit, put together. Uh, she went and she pulled real estate data, uh, mileage rates for all the school districts in the county. Um, and then denoted by the yellow uh tax increases. Um, so some of the districts in the county raised taxes every year since fourteen, fifteen. Um, some of them, well, first of all, hasn't raised taxes in the entire period. I, you might, you probably, guys probably should hire the business administrator.
It's a small budget, too.
You sound like he's pretty darned. No, I, I know, he's a, he's a great guy, but yeah, he's, he's very good. Uh, but, but yeah, so, so what we're trying to show you is, and then what we did was, well, we, we totaled up knowing increase over a ten-year period and then, and then divided that out by the ten years about an average. Um, so if you look at Penridge and comparison, uh, compare us to the other districts with the ten-year average, um, you know, we did raise taxes in sixteen, seventeen, and fifteen, sixteen. Um, we haven't raised taxes since, and over that time period, we raised, raised taxes, total five point six mil. Um, so over ten years, that's an average of point five six three three, uh, which is the absolute lowest, except for First Borough. Uh, so we have, we have none um and hard on our, on our taxes there, uh, compared to the rest of the districts.
So some of those where it says like forty two percent for Pensbury, is it Pensbury, K?
Yeah.
So does that mean their taxes went up forty percent?
Their taxes went up forty two point seven mils.
Mills, okay, that's, that's.
Yep, over that time period, uh, at, the average is four point, four point two mils per year.
Yeah.
Um, they went up in the ten-year period. There are some, there's some big increases there, Mooresville at sixty eight mils.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, it's, it's.
No, I think it's important to point out that, you know, most of the districts have been raising taxes every year around us, and uh we've managed to hold that line, so I think that's impressive.
There's three dis, three districts last year in uh, in Bucks County that didn't raise taxes.
Yeah, especially the last few years, most, most of the districts didn't raise taxes.
So what have we been up to uh since March tenth? Um, we had multiple cabinet meetings, um, just focused on budget reduction. Um, we went through and reviewed revenue accounts again, um, adjusted, adjusted where needed. We reviewed all our expenditure accounts again. Um, we have went back through the personnel budget, um, looking for anything that's there that could possibly be changed. Um, building level staffing meetings are happening and have happened, uh, continue to happen. Uh, T A's and P C A's are getting a very, very in-depth look on a district-wide basis as far as what the needs are for T A's, P C A's, um, and how we're actually utilizing that, that model, and what's the best way to utilize T A's and P C A's. We reviewed all the software that's utilized within the curriculum within the district and made some changes. Um, and we went back through and reviewed all the support service equipment requests, and we've made a number of changes there and reduced. So again, this is just a carryover slide, that's the Act One Index, and what the Act One, Act One Index of four percent allows the district to do this year is about three point five million dollars. Um, this is the change in revenue, uh, since March tenth, we've actually decreased uh the re, the reimbursements for social security and retirement, because we have actually decreased the cost of social security and retirement. And we'll get to those on addition, on the next few slides. As far as expenditures, we've cut salaries by seven hundred thirteen thousand dollars, employee benefits by another half million, professional services, um, mostly our I U services contract by another hundred and thirty eight thousand. Um, tuition to non-public schools by a hundred and forty two thousand. Software, after the review, we've cut ninety three thousand dollars in software. And equipment, we went back and we've taken all the buses out uh of the budget, except for one bus, which is a wheelchair bus, which we actually have to have, and we've removed a truck from the maintenance budget. Uh, for a total reduction over two and a half million dollars in expenditure. Looking at it in a different way, we removed four learning support T A's that were requested as new positions in the budget. We removed two, two autistic support T A's that were requested as new. We've removed eleven P C A positions from the budget for a half million dollars. We reduced the maintenance equipment by a hundred and five, that's the truck, the buses are about eight hundred and sixty thousand. Um, the special education tuition and services, two hundred and eighty one thousand. The technology, software, uh, ninety three thousand. We actually increased the budget by two hundred and fifteen thousand for the E V R uh increase, cost increase for the agreement that we're reaching with the union, um, which is a continuation of the last teacher's contract. We're removing eight T A positions that were funded to resters and carried into this year's budget. And we're going back and looking at those positions and taking them out, another four hundred thousand. Um, we got a, we, we received a late retirement, uh, so I went back and adjusted that salary. Uh, and that's where you get the two and a half million dollars in savings. When you add that to the March tenth saving of three point seven million dollars, we now cut our grant total of six point three million dollars in expenditures from the budget um over what was requested when we started the process.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys, so certainly the board has been directing to try to reduce costs and uh all these ideas came not through us doing anything, but the administration working together and looking what they could come up with, uh, which wouldn't impact any learning or anything. So I've been impressed with the reaction, it's obviously hard to close that budget deficit, but they've done a really good job.
Certainly has been a tremendous effort by the cabinet as a team led by Mr. Barrios. Like I said, we've had multiple, multiple cabinet meetings in the last four weeks that have been nothing but weird sitting and talking about budget. So, there's a bit, needs to be a lot of thank you to the panel for a lot of leadership through this process for sure. Because I can't do it myself, because I don't know the educational side, like these gentlemen know it. But we could get in a room and we can talk about things and we can shoot ideas, and, but we have to work together as a team, all of us in the cabinet, because it just can't come from one of us. Um, because we all do a specific thing and we work together as a team, we can figure things out. But if we're trying to work as, you know, on an island, each of us, it's never gonna work. So I think we have a good team here that's really working together to try to figure this out.
And this is without a tax increase, there is still the six point three million?
The six point three nine is the total co, uh, cost that we've reduced, expenditure that we've reduced from the budget over, since we started.
Yeah, well, and I did wanna add, like, the E D R is an additional cost, which is another thing that was, been ignored for eight years. Now, we know we're doing the right thing here and paying our coaches and all the other people who get extra duty, but this board is gonna have to pay for it too, but it's making up for something that should have been corrected eight years ago. And that's both the board and the P E A not agreeing to negotiate on it.
Right.
And we're inheriting that cost too, so just make sure everyone's aware of that.
Well, and I, just to dovetail what you're saying, Mr. Wors, E D R stands for extra duty and responsibility. And that is to pay our staff who go above and beyond, they coach, they supervise different clubs and activities, and they expend a lot of their personal time, and that hadn't been touched in eight years. So, uh, we're working with our partners in the union to, and I believe we've come to a, a, a good resolution and has to go through certain processes and be voted upon and hopefully ratified, but um, I commend, you know, our, our administration, our, our union for working together, and of course, our school board for recognizing that, um, you know, the, if you looked at county averages for coaches, for example, for athletic teams, they were below average. And, um, it just wasn't addressed before. So we took this on, it was painstaking to go through each position to ensure that we had equity and parity for these professionals who, again, devote their time. So we look forward to the April twenty eighth board meeting and hopefully have a resolution and put this to bed.
The other is uh full-day kindergarten, which our residents have been asking for, for fifteen years. And it was, there was no appetite for it before in other boards, and uh, thanks to Angelo and his team, we do have that now. But there are costs associated, there are teacher costs associated. We're shifting things around, so it looks more like a cost neutral, but there's costs because there's more teachers.
You know, if I could delve into that a little bit, Mr. Wors, so it may appear as though it's cost neutral, it's not. We had four teachers retiring, we could have, um, foregone replacing those positions through attrition. We have essentially reassigned those teachers to ensure that they're teaching full-day kindergarten. And we think, uh, there's a lot of value added to, uh, for our families. Um, in my travels, I've had several conversations with, um, parents and it's something very important to them, and I also think it'll. And I also think it'll provide a, a great opportunity to retain students in Penridge. A lot of students will go to other, uh, schools, I shall, I'm not going to name their names publicly, but they go to other schools and they'll remain in those systems and we think that, um, it'll be a good attract it for our community. And, uh, if you look at, uh, many local school districts, they offer full day kindergarten. So we had the support of the board and, uh, we went for it and I'm very proud of this team for being able to, um, execute this next year. There were folks who doubted it, didn't think we could get it done, but we are, um, doing this, in my opinion, in a very measured approach where we are phasing it in, um, to have one section of full day in every school and then the following year to have full, full day kindergarten uh, for our families and students, which I think is outstanding.
So I, again, thank you, I think this is an extraordinary effort. I am concerned of the costs though, and our classrooms still echo what I said the last time. I mean, there's usually fat to be trimmed, which I understand, but you need some fat to sustain life and, um, I'm worried, like, I don't like when I see positions getting cut when I know our staff is already working really hard and, um, I know you consider that with all your decisions, but this makes me nervous for our staff and our students. And not from a lack of incredible effort from administration, recognizing that you're working within the budget that we have and we have to make your work somehow, but.
It's also needs to be noted that we do have shrinking enrollment, declining enrollment. That's something that's, uh, gonna be a continuing trend too.
Yes, just seven years ago, there were, it's only my little mnemonic device, but seven years ago, there were over seven thousand students in this district. Now we're hovering just above six thousand. So we cannot sustain the levels of, of staffing and, and some of the staffing we received during COVID, um, through SRS funding. So I wouldn't look at it as we're reducing staff, we're just trying to, when folks retire, examining the positions. And that's why we had the presentation earlier to talk about, uh, the position control. Secondly, I think it's, um, critically important to really take a deep dive and look at the schools and how we're using different staff and, and making sure we have true alignment. So I would, I think we have plenty of staff here. I just think we need to shift and if it entails a transfer, so be it. And we have the preservation of jobs and, uh, not looking, we are not looking, we're not recommending furloughs or anything like that, but we do have to, uh, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we are leveraging our resources. So we're, you know, financially responsible.
And again, appreciate that, but like, the eleven PCAs, are they people who are currently here?
I believe the eleven PCAs are, was that the judge group? Okay.
Okay.
So that was us using an outside group to bring folks in because when we were posting for positions, we weren't necessarily filling them. So, um, I'm not necessarily in favor of outsourcing that work when we have folks inside that we can look at more closely to figure out how we're going to assign these, these individuals.
So it's still like a little headcount reduction?
Yes.
Like, you're right. And then the buses, I felt like the transportation budget was already very tight?
Yes.
And slim, so, you know, this isn't gonna go away, like, these buses, we're gonna need to replace them sooner than later.
And the plan will be that next year, I don't believe we've had a year where we skipped a replacement bus, but in meetings with Sean and, and Jessica Kraus, we feel confident that we can do this for one year. I would not recommend this be, um, a residual pattern of ours, but I do believe that because we're, we're hitting a contraction right now, we haven't even, um, we have not begun to discuss the federal uncertainty.
Yeah.
Uh, that Mr. Kaufman actually alluded to earlier, where we're looking at this budget, we are hoping for the best, but we're planning for the worst, is, is the best way I could describe it, so. Uh, but that's a, it's an excellent point you raised with respect to the buses, it's not an advisable.
You're highlighting a significant concern about the current.
That's his phone.
Looks so intense, it's recording me.
We're on YouTube, Brad.
That's right, my, my phone alarm went off in the middle of my mother's funeral last week, that was really great to hear. So, no, no worries. If we, um, so again, I appreciate the work that was done, I just want to be clear to the community who's listening right, that, and I don't feel like this is because we had a lot of fluff. I feel like we're working within, like, we're getting it to work within the monies that's available to us. And I want to be clear with that messaging, but, like, I don't think these were things that we were asking for that were frivolous or anything like that, like, so.
We're, we're making some, um, we're making some tough choices.
Yeah.
And we're making some changes to the, the way we do things and the way we, we run programs. Um, so again, there, this is not frivolous stuff. And when Angelo said contracting, look at, look at the revenue too. We're budgeting half a percent of increases in revenue, that's unheard of. We're usually budgeting four, three, four percent of a revenue increase. We're looking at a half a percent. We've already talked about the fact that we've got no state money, twenty five thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have, and Angelo mentioned federal money, uh, we haven't even talked about that yet. But local revenues, we generally have very nice increase in real estate growth each year and an earning income tax growth each year. Neither of them are happening this year, all those revenue sources are slowing down. Um, the EIT is very concerning, um, because when EIT growth slows down to the point where, where you've seen it, um, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a good sign.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other thing that, that I have a lot of concerns about is the, is the interest revenue. We budgeted three point two million dollars in interest revenue and it's in this budget. Um, if something happens and interest rates absolutely tank, I mean, if they, if they, if interest rates go, if interest rates go from fours to less than ones, we're gonna lose two and a half million dollars just like that out of this budget with, with no way to, to make that up. That's why you have fund balance. That's why, you know, I always preach, have, that the fund balance is there for a reason, it's the safety net. Because something could happen in this economy that those interest rates crash. As I said, we lose two million dollars just like that at the snap of a finger and there's, there's no way to get that back until interest rates come back up. Um, yeah, I mean, we were, we were, be- before the pandemic, we were seeing interest rates of point one oh percent. You know, from point one oh to a quarter, now we're in, we're at fours. A year and a half ago, we were making fives. So everything is just so volatile right now that it's, that it's, it's, it's very scary. And to see, to see the, the local revenues contract at the same time the state revenues aren't coming and with the scare at the federal level, it's, it's, it's a very scary time. So with everything that we just talked about, with cuts that we made, the two and a half million dollars in cuts, we are still, total revenues of a hundred fifty nine point nine million, total expenditures is a hundred sixty three point three. We're still over budget by three point three million dollars. So with all that done, we're still, we're still in the hole three point three million. Now, that is without the tax increase, that's with no tax, no tax increase. As you know, the Act One Index allows three point five million dollars. So we have, we have reduced below the, below the Act One Index. So that's where we stand at this point. Looking at the local revenues, local revenues, or I'm sorry, the revenues collect, local re- local revenue is our biggest, a hundred seventeen point three million. Uh, state revenue is about forty and a half million, federal revenue is just over two million, that's what makes up the hundred fifty nine point nine million dollars.
I thought the federal was five million, I've heard that, is that chugging to?
Two million in the general fund budget, the, the rest of it is in the, is in the, um, nutritional services.
Oh, oh.
Free research, like, school lunch program, outside of the general fund.
So it's just two million?
Two million in this.
Didn't that?
And this is what makes that up in the general fund, this is, um, the, the top part is the general fund. Uh, so you got IDA funding, which is special education funding, the title programs, uh, and then the access money, which again is special education, uh, funding, Department of Human, Human Services. And then the rest of that is the, in nutritional services, uh, offering, so, um.
Only two, two million of that is in the general fund, is?
One point six million is in nutritional services fund?
Okay.
Okay, so here's the difference. You see two million there?
Right.
You see two million there, Ron, as federal revenue? But federal revenue, the number one is IDA funding?
Right.
It is federal revenue, but it flows through the IU, so we're required to account for it in local.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
But it comes from the federal government. So total federal sources to us, we add that in, right? Because if something happens at the federal level and they eliminate that, we're not gonna get it, it's a federal revenue source. Um, but it flows through the IU, the IU collects it and, and, and records it as federal revenue, sends it to us as pass-through and we have to record it as state, or as local revenue, so.
So the two million is number two and number three?
Yes.
Number two and three?
Yep. So this is uncertain at this point. Um, we don't know what will happen at the federal level, um, as far as the closure of the Department of Education, what that means for federal funding, um, if it, if the department does close, will federal funds still flow? Um, who knows? It seems like, you know, things change on a daily basis at the federal level.
Yeah, but we're proceeding as if it's gonna continue and.
We're proceeding, we're proceeding as if it's gonna continue. And we'll do that until we know something better. Um, so this is where we're at, the first line item is the one, as the Act One Index, three point five million. Where we're at as of April fourteenth is three point three million dollar deficit. Um, that equates to about a hundred sixty four dollars for a property at the median assessed value. Um, the last month, we were much higher than that, so we've, we've come a long way in a, in a month.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, this is just the, um, expenditures by object totals. Uh, and you can see where we're at on March tenth, where we're at on April fourteenth. And really, this, this equates back to the slide before where I showed you based on the objects where we cut, you know, expenditures. Object summaries, um, again, seventy one and a half percent of the budget comes from salaries and benefits. Uh, this is the detail of the two hundred object line item. Our biggest cost in, in, in the, uh, two hundred objects, which is benefits, is of course, is retirement, is the biggest, at twenty, almost twenty five million. Uh, and then medical insurance at nine point two million and, um, nutrition coverage at two point three million. Uh, and according to social security at five point five million. So those are the big ones in that cabinet. Uh, and this is, um, this is a graph of this two hundred object code, um, and what has happened kind of in that same time period as we look at the contracts. So when the salaries are going up, the benefits are going up too. So we've, we've increased this line item by, by, uh, roughly nine million dollars over this time period. Um, and benefits, medical and prescription benefits from seventeen eighteen until twenty five, twenty six were increased one time. That is twenty five, twenty six. So this entire increase up until the last year is nothing but salary driven. It's driven by salary increases and it's driven by the retirement rate. Because there was no change to health, health and medical benefits up until the twenty five, twenty six closing year. So it just shows you what the, the.
So were the healthcare costs to the district flat over that period of time?
Yes, we did not need to raise them.
So where were you, but the, so that means the cost was flat, I mean, I don't understand.
There were a few things that happened during those, during those contract negotiations, which helped a lot, um.
So shifted some of the costs to?
Some of the costs was shifted deductible, were put in place for the first time, which has a big impact on your experience. Um, and we, we had a time period of very good experience on the medical side and the prescription side in the last twelve to fifteen months, and we, we talked about this. We, we, that, that has changed and we've had very, very bad experiences, we've been very unlucky, unlucky. Both in the fact that we've had a lot of very severe medical issues, but also our prescription drug has just gone sky high. So, um, yeah, but I just wanted to show you that the increase in cost is happening just through the natural, well, to the mandate of the, of, of the, uh, retirement cost happening and also it climbs with salaries. Three hundred object, Ron, you asked last month what, uh, when we, when we were talking about object tools, what was in the three hundreds? So I put a, did a breakout of, uh, what the three hundreds are. The biggest one, of course, is the IU services for special education, the three twenty two, uh, about five point six.
All the TAs and substitutes are under three twenty nine?
Not three twenty nines, the big, the big line item there is the substitutes.
Oh, so that is just substitutes or?
There's some other things there, but that's the major.
The main ones.
Yeah, major, I just tried to pick out the major cost drivers. Okay? So what's new in the budget? Um, there are some things to celebrate here. Um, full day kindergarten, uh, next year, we'll have one full day kindergarten classroom in every, um, every building. Uh, phase two is coming in twenty six, twenty seven, uh, where we'll, we'll have, uh, full full day kindergarten in every building. Um, expansion of the high school STEM program, we had lost a shop in the high school and, uh, and we're converting that from metal into, into another wood shop, uh, which is very highly attended here in our high school. Um, so we're in the process of doing that. Um, there's money in different, various places for that, there's a teacher budgeted. Um, there is new equipment in, in Dr. Shad's budget for that program. Uh, there's some money in the capital budget for the air handling system in that, in that shop. Um, so, uh, other things, the elementary science curriculum materials, uh, is in the budget, uh, middle school science curriculum, uh, STEM laser for South to make, um, make the NIEPL with the other two young schools. Uh, there is a new psychologist to help with the special education population. There's two autistic support teachers being added to the budget. And there's two speech positions which are being increased from partial FTEs to full FTEs next year. So there are, there are some additions, um, and actually, the other thing we could throw on here is our, um, our, uh, agreement with the teachers union to increase the, um, EGRs.
Mm-hmm.
So, budget drivers, major cost drivers, wages, benefits up, um, wages up seven hundred twelve K, benefits up two million. Uh, profession, and that's being driven by the healthcare cost increase this year. Uh, professional service staffing, one point seven, driven by the IU contract. The remaining, uh, areas of the budget are actually down by two hundred seventeen thousand, that's how we get to four point two million. Uh, revenue is up about eight hundred thousand and that's how we get to about three point three seven nine million. Um, this is, uh, the same spreadsheet that you saw last, uh, month, but number ones in red, we actually removed from the budget. These were positions that were requested, we reevaluated and decided to not add these positions, so they've been removed. And then we did, I get our audit report back, so we have our actual, um, fund balances at the end of this year, twenty twenty four. But I like to include them in the, in the, um, budget presentation so you can see what they, what they are.
What was the capital projects committed?
The five point seven million, that's, uh, the capital projects fund balance.
Yeah, the capital committed sixteen, well, that's, oh, six. Yeah, the capital committed sixteen, well, that's, oh, there is, but I was looking at the wrong year.
Far over on the right.
Okay.
You can see, I mean, you can see there.
Yeah, that gives you.
The question you asked me was, you know, what's been happening with that over the last four or five years? We have been spending a lot of money on capital projects um over the last few years and it's, we've we've used a lot, so.
Yeah, well, I guess the question is, are we not spending enough now? I guess we'll learn that with the.
Right?
Yeah, I'm waiting for that. When is that gonna be ready?
Couple of weeks.
I thought you said that last night.
I know.
That's not a fixed date, I guess.
No, actually, Angela Brad and I received an email from those folks.
Friday.
Friday, that they're ready to sit with us again and go and wear the rags, so we'll we'll sit with them once we get back from from Easter break. And we'll we'll get an update from them and we'll keep moving forward. So.
That's the capital projects?
Uh huh, yes, yes, yeah. So hopefully my couple of weeks really means a couple of weeks. So budget timeline, uh what has to happen, here we are, April fourteenth. Um a couple of things happened at the state level. Uh they tell us about property tax relief money, uh we we put that in the budget. That's dollar for dollar, whatever they give us to the tax of the tax period because of the farm side exemption. Um May seventh uh is our next uh finance meeting, so the budget updates happen. May twelfth is the voting meeting, uh that is the first budget adoption. It can then be changed between that vote and the vote in June. Um which will then happen on um June sixteen is the final adoption date. So the book, the budget does require two adoptions, so we talked about before, one in May and one in June, and it can be changed between the two adoption dates. Okay?
Do we usually change it?
No, we generally are.
Locked in.
Generally know what we're gonna do with, yeah, with that with that meeting in May and lock it in and. But, you know, something that happened at the state level where they 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 share some news with us that.
It could affect it, if they get it done.
If they get it. Uh outstanding considerations, Dan and I met with our general liability insurance care or uh brokers last week or week four. Uh the estimates that we have in the budget remain unchanged at this time. Uh they believe that we are, uh we have exactly what we need in there. We did reduce the bus bus funding from a million forty thousand down to a hundred and sixty thousand to get one bus this sum this year. Instead of, I think, six. Um there is budgetary reserve in this budget. Uh other things that could impact us is anything that's happening out there in the world. Um could have an impact on electricity, natural gas, gasoline, diesel, heating oil. We have budgets in, you know, contained in there that are uh are our best estimates. Any new additional changes happening as far as staffing, it could affect the budget. Uh technical school budget seems to be pretty locked into place at this point in time, so I think we can kind of take that one off the table, pretty comfortable with that. The debt drop-off, the six point one million remains in the budget, transfer capital project. Um to continue on with our mission there, keep the buildings up and running. Uh any potential legislation that we've talked about, the church school tuition cap? Excuse me, Angela talked about that earlier. We've been hearing anything from the eight thousand cap to ten thousand cap. But we've been hearing that for year after year after year, so uh we don't believe it, we see it. And then on the revenue side, uh anything could happen, you know, as the state goes through the budget process. Um they don't seem to get very serious about it until, you know, late June, uh which puts us in a pretty difficult spot. And again, the twenty-five thousand dollar increase is a very small increase for us. Um and then anything could happen to our federal funding, uh anything that, you know, potential changes there. So there's a lot of questions this year in the budget process, and most of them are outside of our control. So questions, and how do we move forward here as a group? I guess we're looking for guidance, of course, as we come back to you and Dan.
So, so, I mean, I was just like, we're second round, doing budgets. Have we walked this razor's edge before? Or is this like a really um an outlier year with the uncertainties in budgets? And supplies and interest rates and federal funding and like, I mean, are we literally just sitting in the perfect storm right now?
Which you're seeing me for sitting in the perfect storm. Um there's always a couple of those things that are happening in the budget cycle. But this year, there's just so many of them happening all at the same time, for sure. And the thing is, is really, it's really concerning is the contraction at the local level. Quite frankly, our money comes from our local level, right? Um a hundred and seventeen million of the hundred and sixty million dollars in revenue comes from the local revenue source. The biggest part of that, over eighty million, almost ninety million is real estate taxes. Another twenty-three million in earned income tax. So when I talk about those, when those are contracting, it hurts. Um and then you turn around and you see, you see a state budget, you know, that's giving us a whopping twenty-five thousand dollars. Everything's going like this, and the expenditures are going like this. So, yeah, it is the perfect storm.
I agree with that. I was saying saying the same thing before, but so we have a revenues flat.
Yes.
We've hit with salary increases, benefit increases, pension increases, um healthcare was another one. And then EDR and all those things, so we're obviously, hey, we've never run into such a perfect storm before in the time that I've been involved. And uh it doesn't really leave us much alternative.
And don't forget the Esters funding dried up. The two plus million that we, and not just Pen Ridge, districts became accustomed to that extra funding. And comfortable with, you know, providing services for our students, so.
And we really tried to save those positions. We kept them for an extra year, but it's just, it's it's too much.
I think that debt drop-off helped us push off any kind of an increase because we're getting that. We saved a lot, six million dollars a year, which we could use, and that helped fund capital projects. So we still have that, but it it's catching up to us.
We did take a chunk of that last year. That 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 drop-off was earlier by six point six million. And we used, we used about five or six hundred thousand of that to balance the budget.
So we were dipping into some.
We dipped into it last year.
Which we don't want to do.
Unassigned fund balance last year, or.
That transferred.
We did transfer that, but I don't, I would be very cautious to do that this year. Given the uncertainty with federal funding, because we don't have a definitive yes, no, maybe. And um you know, if you follow the news cycle, it seems like it changes rapidly. You know, you have the Department of Education being dismantled and um we were led to believe that the money would go back to the states as a pass-through. Um but just recently, I was in Harrisburg and we just, there's a lot of uncertainty right now. So I would be remiss to say just use unassigned fund balance to balance our budget this year. I would not. Especially as we engage ICS in its feasibility study. And if there are going to be renovations, improvements on the horizon, um we want to be prepared to have a robust capital projects fund. And that unassigned fund balance, um in the event that we have a catastrophic event. We have weather, brand-new roof, a system, a heating HVAC system goes down. Emergencies like that to be able, um just a few years ago, there was a school district in Montgomery County that had a tornado go through and wipe out, so there was new construction and it destroyed some properties, so it can get real.
It can get real quick. And and really, when you, you think about where we're at right now, uh at a three point two million dollar deficit. Eighty-three point three million deficit. And what Angela's saying, absolutely. If you use fund balance to do, to 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 bridge that gap this year, you start next year's budget process, three point three million dollars in the hole.
And we've pushed off things.
With no ability to raise those taxes, because once you don't raise the taxes, you're, you've lost that ability for that year. It's gone. Next year's Act One index is is uh estimated to be lower than this year. It's estimated to be about three point eight percent, this year's four percent. So next year's ability is gonna be less than this year's ability. So when we we look about it, we look at it, Dan and I already have conversations about next year's budget. When we talked about this, when we we did, we took out eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in buses. We want to put those back in. So even if we balance this budget, we start next year's budget, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in the hole. If interest rates drop, even if they drop to two percent, we start next year's budget, another million and a half in the hole. Because we have about three point two million dollars in interest revenue right now, budgeted at four percent interest rates. If interest rates go to two percent, we're now a million and a half more in the hole before we even do anything next year. And all those costs are already put in place for next year because of the teacher's contract, festival contract, and contracts for everything else, and mandating costs for retirement and so forth, and I keep going all night. But the thing that is, is that if we don't fix it now, next year's hole is gonna be that much bigger, right? And there are already things out there in the in the future for next year that are warning signs to to us. As we look at this and we talk about this. So there's things, it it's not like next year's rosy. Next year does not look rosy. And Ron, when we did, when we did the three-year projection, we saw those numbers, right? And I don't see, I don't see earned income tax coming back. I don't see a big increase in real estate at this point. So, and I don't see anything happening at the state level for us, because they're, 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 if we're drying up, they're drying, right? So there's a lot of warning signs out there. And I've never stood up here and cried wolf, um because we we, I've done this, I've done this for ten years here. And we raised taxes the first year I was here, and we haven't raised taxes since. So we've right-sized our budget and we've done things correctly. But there's a lot of warning signs out in front of us in the next few years that are very scary.
Right. So given that, like, I appreciate the like, hoping for the best, but planning for the worst. What is our planning for the worst then? Like, because if there's something, say we even lose a couple million of the federal funding. And um like, the only way we could do that is cutting programs. And what programs are like?
I couldn't renegotiate with the teachers.
You could also.
Reduce their salary while inflation and everything else is closing in more.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I think if, let's say, the scenario just painted for us, like, you say two million?
Yeah, like, we're, we're a big chunks, I guess.
All right, so let's say your example, we lose two million. My recommendation to the board, and I think Sean, I can speak for you, would be unassigned fund balance.
To cover the gap a year.
Cover it this year. So let's say we have an Act One index tax increase, but there was still, you know, that reduction, then.
Yeah.
We would have to dip into our.
And then what happens next year?
And then you have to raise taxes.
And we'd have to raise taxes, and we'd have to.
No choice.
Exactly.
There's no doubt that, there's no doubt that on the expenditure side, we've got to figure out how to like right-size, right? Because, I mean, Angelo said it over and over and over again, and Brad says it every day. We went from seventy-three hundred kids to sixty-one hundred kids. In that same time period, our teachers, number of teachers we've had has increased, right? Other staff members have increased. So there, there's things going in different directions that need to be, that need to be brought back to one.
Calibrated and we need to equilibrium with it.
So we need to do this on a multiple-year plan to recalibrate this district. And bring expenditures back in line with the actual student body we have. Um bring the employee levels back in line with the actual student bodies we have. And bring our facilities back in line with the actual student bodies we have. There are multiple, multiple areas of this that that we need to look at as a group. And when Resley comes back with their study, their their utilization study at the district. They're gonna have recommendations of things that we can do from a district standpoint to right-size this ship moving forward.
I think there's a lot of deficiencies that we can make up. And there's a lot of, you know, just looking very closely, when someone retires and we're looking at replacements. We're just gonna have to look at those and make sure that we're being judicious in doing them. I, I don't think this is a time to panic. There's nothing to panic about. I think the district has built itself in a pretty good state financially, you know, we're just. We'll, compared to other districts around in the county, we're doing okay.
Almost every year.
Yeah, we'll be able to weather this one.
And being debt-free and close to debt-free, obviously, gives us much more room to move on. That's the beauty of twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty, where there's no debt on books. And that gives us a lot more flexibility to borrow money if we need to do something. I just want to thank you again for a very thorough presentation. Um, you know, I have complete faith in your financial department, I think that's been proven many times over. So we, we value your guidance and recommendations. You know, I see no other way to get around this than by increasing the tax rate.
I will present another.
I do think we still have room to make other changes and cuts, so. We could push this off a year and rob from the fund balance, but that's not being good stewards of the school. It might be politically good to do that, but that's not what this board is about.
Yeah, I I believe Angelo is exactly right in the fact, what he said, we could put all this, all this tax. The whole, the whole Act One index in place, or or whatever we need to balance this budget. And we could still have to take from fund balances this year because of there's so many uncertainties about that interest, what's gonna happen with interest rate? Um what what's gonna happen with federal funding? What's gonna happen at the state level? So we could put this budget in place, and we could still end up short on the revenue side because those things fall away. And we could still have to pull from our fund balances that we have in place to make it through next year.
Yeah.
Just because there's so much, so much uncertainty at all three levels.
That's why you have a fund balance.
That's why you have a fund balance. Um I've always said that fund balance is like your, it's like your savings account at home. It's what you use when the, when the, you know, when the pipes burst in the bathroom, you have a problem.
Yeah, I think there, like, all the schools enrollment pretty much have been going down since COVID. Yeah, and that's, I, and I understand it sounds like if we've been increasing staff as enrollment has gone down. You know, I'd be curious on what that's happening to, but in areas in other countries where their education has like pretty much completely bounced back from COVID, they did it by investing in staff and doing all the things that we're not gonna be able to do to the maximum potential with these budget restrictions. So that, I'm, that has me worried. And then even things like, like the charter school cap. I mean, how likely do we think that is of enacting? Like, I don't think Coleman's gonna go for that. Like, I'm trying to think of who would even support that.
A lot of people would support that.
A lot of PA centers would.
Charter schools.
Pretty invested in the charter schools, honestly.
Charter schools came into play in the late, in the late nineteen ninety, when I started my career. And they've been talking about revamping that since nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
It was, it was made for, the law was, the law was built for breaking more to charter schools. There was no, there was no idea of cyber charter when they wrote the law. And then cyber charter came around, some some genius figured this out, we're gonna do this online, right? And we're gonna open these cyber charter schools, because charter schools were supposed to be, were supposed to be approved by the local school board and operate within the local school district, right? And then they started approving cyber charter schools that got approved by some local school board, one of the five hundred local school boards in Pennsylvania, and opened their doors, and then were available to every kid in all five hundred school districts. There were no boundaries. So the law was written to have boundaries and local. So the law was written to have boundaries and local control by the local school boards. And as soon as the cyber avenue came into play, all that control went away and it became the Wild West. And there is no control, there is not. And they've been talking about this for thirty, almost thirty years, and they haven't made any changes yet. So to think that we're gonna come away in the next two months with a limit on cyber, cyber charter tuition? I will, I will believe it when the angst dry, I will.
It's not in the budget, right? You're you're not putting it in, you're keeping it as is, right?
Keeping it as is.
That would be a benefit.
It will be a benefit if it happens.
We're not counting that, so that's, that's the best we can do with that. You can't. If you function, if you think that's gonna happen, well, you've got thirty years and we haven't had it happen, so.
It, the, I'll go back to everything that that you're concerned about, we all are too.
Yeah.
And but the issue is, is that we are mandated to do so many things on the expenditure side, and we are so limited in our ability to raise money to pay for those things, that our discretion is so small, right? Our discretion is tiny, what we can actually choose to do, so much is made, is we're made to do.
Right.
And and then at the same time, the state says, you must pay, 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 and all by the way, you can only have this much revenue, right? Because we're gonna limit you to this much revenue, every year, we're gonna limit you to this much revenue. And that has nothing to do with what you want to do as a public school district, how you want to, what education you want to provide for these kids in your district. It's a balancing act. You must pay for this, but you can only this much revenue.
Yeah, and that was, I guess, that was my question, and I guess it definitely was, that there aren't programs we have control enough of to even influence the budget largely enough to make up for these big deficits.
Well, the one thing we didn't discuss tonight was grants and how much money we can get from grants, and is there an opportunity to put more resources into getting more grants? Not something I really want to discuss tonight, but that's money that isn't necessarily budgeted, that could be a benefit for the district. And I don't know if we're doing that effectively or not.
Would grants, would grants pay for something that we're already budgeted for, or are grants adding something to the cost to that the grant's helping to cover it?
Want to take that one, grants?
Yeah, I mean, it could be both.
Okay.
So it could pay for, because most grants are tied to something. So here's a standard of what we want you to complete. Angela just sent me a grant, and it wasn't a huge grant, it was thirty thousand dollars. Um, and I believe it was connected to special education, my memory serves me correctly, but. So we're gonna look for anything and everything that we can find that would either A, pay for an existing service or B, pay for something that we think would be great to have. So I think we look at both and, you know, we receive things, social workers, superintendent's office, my office, and we just apply and put for, put forward good application. And I think sometime these grant programs are looking for people to apply and districts don't, but it may change now because of the financial situation we're all in right now.
Can we, can you let us know how much we get in grants, or is that kept in one spot, or we figure that out?
Yeah, there, in the last, the last budget cycle, there were, there were a few grants, um there was, there was a grant for some capital projects. Um, we submitted a project for new lighting, uh if you remember, yeah, nothing from that.
Yeah, we applied for a grant last year.
You got a big one, right?
Dan wrote a grant, Dan wrote a grant for, uh for safety and security based off of our um Pennsylvania State Police Security Report, which we got, Dan got us four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That was huge.
Which we're, we are in the process of spending that money, and next month, we'll be bringing the last piece of that to you as far as the security upgrades with that money.
Well, that's just my point. Right, but we applied for a facilities grant through our, our former engineering firm, and we went through a lot of work and we didn't get anything.
We didn't get anything.
Or some repairs and maybe.
We're competing against four hundred ninety nine other schools for grants, so it's kind of hard to, especially with what's coming up.
And our financial position is in a, in a great position.
That's an excellent point, Mr. Spormac. We had, at that point, our financials were, you know, sound where there were other schools in need that qualified for those grants.
While I'm still, in comparison, we're still doing better than other districts.
Yeah, but to your point, we definitely need to do more work on our grant.
Other districts are doing. It'll be interesting, yeah. I'm not saying we're doing a bad job, I just want to know more about it.
We have a grant that's on our social, one of our social work positions. So there are, there are some, some state grants, and I don't know if those grants will be renewed in the new, in the new year's budgets. Every year's a different kind of state.
So, yeah, I'm definitely the only person in the room who's just concerned about public education in general. I mean, like, all the schools seem to be really struggling with deficits this year. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm worried by the time people in the community wake up, it's gonna be on the downward swing. It's gonna be very hard to turn it. And, you know, to me, this is a, it's a brave situation, you know, and I'm worried. I'm worried not just for Penridge, but for all the public schools around us. And so how, like, how do we get that message out there that says, like, this is, this is probably gonna get a little worse before it gets better? And this is the impact it's gonna have on your students' education when we can't afford to pay our staff? You know, your classes are gonna get bigger, then it's all connected. Now, if our district isn't performing as well, then people don't want to move here, our home values go down, our revenue comes down. Like, this can quickly circle. So, I mean, I always feel like we need to show that, and be like, this is the, the potential, you know, obviously, not all of it's a given, but this is the potential downward swing we're on with other schools too. And if people don't start waking up and doing something, your public schools are in a lot of trouble.
You, uh, on that note, I think what you really need to do, what we need to do, is you need to get the state legislature that represents the school district in a room just like this with that presentation. That is eye opening. They need to hear it, they don't hear it. They don't sit at their computers and go through a screen of two and a half hours to listen to a presentation. They need to be brought to this room, sat down, and this presentation should be shown in front of them. They need to see it, they need to understand it.
And I think quite, I think, I think quite a few of them understand the situation and don't care.
But you gotta put them on notice somehow, you gotta get them on notice, you gotta say, we were here, we presented it to you, how are you gonna help us?
Yeah, I've called Coleman's people, they are big fans of charter schools, big fans.
And and you're not incorrect.
It doesn't help public schools.
But again, the charter schools is eight, and we hate to say it, is a private business. And they look at it, the, the board of directors of those private schools are looking at it as a private business. That's the driver.
Yeah, but it damages the public schools in those areas.
But someone needs to stand to the plate and step to the plate and say, this is it.
Their theory is, is that the public schools will treat us like a business and will step up their own game to compete with cyber schools, not recognizing that the, the charter schools, I mean, are the ones who are literally droning the coffers.
And I mean, we did that, was it last year? We did, joined in that resolution for capping charter school tuition at eight thousand dollars and. It, I mean, it's just, no care.
Are we done with your crazy?
We're done with your nonsense. Not yet, anyway.
I'm sure we've guessed your target. Thank you very much, very thorough, very well thought out, a lot of hard work, thank you.
Thank you. Could blow over your head, how you guys pulled this? I'm very impressed by the numbers you pulled together, thank you.
All the work you put in.
Yeah.
It's very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, our next finance committee meeting is scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty five. Thank you, if anyone's still out there for listening, and uh, see you soon. Oh, public comment.